I'm gonna go ahead and call All-Palm City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, January the 22nd, 2019. At 6:00 PM, both All-Palm's council and myself would like to welcome everybody here for the first full council meeting of the year. Both the press and the public have been duly notified in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. If you don't mind, please feel free to join me as I say a prayer to be followed by our pledge of allegiance, which will be followed by our roll call. Dear wise and loving Father, I thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. I thank you for everything you have blessed us with, life itself, our health, and for this island, our paradise we call home. In this day and time when not only our nation, but the world seems divided, help us see that we are but one human race, that we all share this planet together, and that we all need to get along. I ask that you look over those who are sick, and that you look over those who are protecting not only our nation, but those who protect others around the world. And please, Lord, I ask you to look after our residents, our employees, our families, our visitors, and especially our public safety personnel who look over our island's residents We thank you for our liberty, for our freedom of speech, and I ask you for your guidance and wisdom in governing our island, to work together in making the right decisions that affect our residents for not only right now, but going into the future generations. And it's in your most blessed name I pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Cannon?
Here.
Councilmember Ferentz?
Here.
Councilmember Kinghorn?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Rice?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Mayor Carroll?
I am here.
Administrator Fregoso?
Here.
And Attorney Coglan?
Here.
Thank you very much. Next order of business is a reading of the Journal of Previous Meetings.
Oh, Blair Protemm, sorry about that, moving right along.
Election of Mayor Protemm. Do I hear a motion for Mayor Protemm?
I nominate Carol Rice.
Thank you.
Okay, we got, I'll second that nomination. Any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Nominate Randy Bell.
Do we have a second?
I'll nominate Sandy Ferentz.
We need a second on the second one. Susan seconded it.
I'm sorry, I'll second.
And I'll second the third one. All right. Wow, this worked on our list here. Our first nomination was?
Carol Rice.
Carol Rice. All those in favor of Carol Rice, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Could you please?
This is a roll call. One, two, three, four, five. The next on the list was Councilman Bell. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Four. And the last person was, I think the first one got in anyway, we had five. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, I'm very honored.
Okay, now we're moving along to the reading of the Journal of Previous Meetings. As opposed to doing them all individually, we're gonna do them at once. Special meeting of November 13th, 2018, regular meeting of November 27th, 2018, and special meetings of December 4th, 2019, all right, 18. Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second. Any discussions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Citizens' comments. Do we have anybody that'd like to speak to us tonight? Yes, ma'am, please.
My name is Janet Rose, I live at 2501 Cameron Boulevard, and I believe I emailed all of you a situation that is occurring at my house. There's a house being built next to me. The individual knocked down this old J.C. Long cottage and is, you know, building one of these really big structures, which is fine, but he brought in a lot of dirt, and he's got a swimming pool. The bottom line is, my property, which I've owned since 1993, has never flooded except in hurricanes, you know, really, really bad, in that October flooding, remember that? But now every time it rains, my property, and not just my property, but the house on the other side and the entire street gets flooded. It's very concerning, I can't walk out my front door without, you know, stepping into an inch or two of water. Actually, the individual across the street who's more active in local politics and IOP created a petition that the neighbor signed and sent to Doug Carr. I spoke with Doug, and he said, basically, he can require them to submit a drainage plan, which happened to be a swell on the side of his house, which I don't think necessarily is gonna do much good, but he doesn't have the authority to enforce any plan. And I kind of think the situation is a little crazy and certainly unsettling. We have a flooding issue, a drainage issue on the island, and then people build and just make it worse, to have the entire street flooded that never flooded before. So, I've been in touch, well, I've been trying to get in touch with the Department of Transportation to see if I can hook my French drains into the manhole that's at the corner, which really doesn't do very much, and it's sort of like, I wouldn't say phone tag, I just haven't been able to get in touch with them for over a month now. So, you know, so here I am, bringing my case before you because I'm not quite sure what to do at this point, but I just don't think it's fair that someone can build and build up and cause tremendous amount of flooding that never existed before without some requirement by the Isle of Palms that they submit a drainage plan to guarantee that there is no flooding of neighboring properties. So, here I am.
Janet, thank you number one for coming, thank you for the emails. But just so you know, we don't interact back and forth during citizens' comments, but we appreciate you coming and bringing that back in front of us again. Thank you very much.
Okay.
So, again, thank you. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Nice to see all our officials right here, this is impressive. Anyway, my name is Dave Bruner, my wife, Seal, and I live on Forest Trail. We've been here since 1992, and our kids have gotten older, moved out of the house, and we thought, well, let's, let's make a little extra money and rent out our house. So, we talked to the city, and they said, yeah, here's what you need to do. So, we made some modifications to part of our house so that we could rent it out, and then when we came, and we've read the fine print, and we came down to get a license and get it legal, oh, you can't rent out just a part of your house, you have to rent out your whole house. And we just thought, wow, that just, that doesn't seem to make sense. It seems preferable to us as homeowners, and I think to our neighbors, that we could have guests that we would monitor while we're there. We know that the city of Charleston has modified, that they allow homeowners to host a maximum of four adults, with the homeowner required to be on premises. We think that's reasonable. I think Mount Pleasant is also allowing Airbnb-type hosting, except when HOA is prohibited. So, we'd just like to ask you to look into that, reconsider that. It's just an easy way for us to have guests at our house and also make a little extra money. And so, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Do we have any other citizens' comments? Yes, sir?
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Bob Miller, 3 Fairway Village Lane. I just wanted to thank both the Public Safety Committee and a meeting we had with Jimmy and Ryan and Jeff for the responsiveness in addressing any concerns about where we, how fast are we moving forward on the plan, and it seems like as soon as we did, we got some real results, and thank you on that. We feel that part, our big part of our reason for existing, called the IOP Coyote Control Coalition, is to raise awareness in both the community, among our elected leaders, and so forth. So, tonight, we really wanted to do just that, just raise the awareness a little bit. And so, Jillian Corner is with us tonight, and she ran into, well, she didn't run into it, but she had an incident, or a couple incidents, that I'd like you to hear about, and it makes a bigger impression when you hear some of the real tape and really what happens. Jillian?
Well, hello again. I apologize to those of you who heard this at the public safety meeting, but my name is Jillian Kerber. I live at 11 Hidden Green Lane. Little background, prior to this, I've lived on Isle of Palms for three years, and I lived on Lake Village Lane on water, had alligators regularly in my yard multiple times a day, and would consider myself grateful that I live here on this beautiful island and not particularly afraid of animals that could pose a threat. In November, we back up to, we sit on a fairway, we back up to about the 150-yard marker on the fifth hole of the links course, to give you some perspective of where we are. There are a lot of deer up there, target-rich environment, they, there's a crew of about seven or eight that travel together, and on a Saturday morning in November, my husband was seated at our dining room table, looking out the back of the house, and saw, you know, said deer running across the fairway, and the last one was a coyote chasing them. And I wandered out of the bedroom about 10 minutes later and glanced to my right, and I said, oh my gosh, there's a huge coyote sitting right there. And this was early on a Saturday morning, like 8:15, 8:30 in the morning, and he wasn't leaving. So, I got my binoculars out and was studying him, and he was a beautiful, majestic, large, gray-coated animal that almost looked like a wolf. And he wouldn't leave for about 15, 20 minutes. I didn't take my dogs outside, and eventually, he was seated over there, he wandered away off to the hole, the direction of the hole, and disappeared. So, I put my dogs on a leash, we have two small corgis that, we went down the stairs, and I glanced to my right, and this was in my neighbor's backyard. So, if you guys can see this, he caught one of the deer and had eaten its stomach out, you know, from here to the back of the room, from my back steps. So, what my husband didn't see was the takedown of said deer. Called animal control, called the police department, they came, got him. Chris came out the next day, and, or I guess on Monday, and was very kind and explained that the golfers, you know, must have spooked him. He was hanging out because he wanted to finish his meal, but eventually trailed off. So, then, one evening, about a month later, I was in our bedroom, watching TV, curtains drawn, heard a ton of racket behind our house. My bedroom goes out, looks out onto a screen and porch, which is adjacent to the same fairway. And I went, I grabbed my cellphone, loud enough that I heard it over the TV and everything, grabbed my cellphone, ran out onto the porch, quick hit record, got a little recording or audio that I wanted you guys to hear, just so you're aware of what exactly is sort of going on up here. Because it's one thing to hear about it and be aware that there are things, but this was very, very scary to me. And so, let me play this for you, so you can hear it, and what you can see if you watch the video, that I didn't realize at the time, my impression was that it was out maybe in the middle of the fairway, but what I didn't realize was that I was recording a lot of eyeballs dotted, jumping all around right outside my yard. So, with your permission, may I play just, it's a quickie, it's 11 seconds. So, I called to the police department to report that. That was at 7:37 at night. Called to the police department to report that, spoke with Sergeant King, he was very kind to me on the phone, but also explained, you know, duly noted, there's not a whole lot I can do. We texted back and forth, because I said, I would like to send you this audio so that you're aware of what's going on up here at Hidden Green. And I was alone that night and was sort of fearful to take my dogs out, because there was so much activity right behind my house. Two and a half hours later, around 10 o'clock, I called the police department again, because I have a big expensive flashlight, and there were three or four of them still out there right behind my house. And I spoke with a woman who told me there wasn't much she could do, they have nothing to do with Wild Dunes, they use soft leg traps there, if I was scared, I should take my dogs in the car and take them to the rec center to let them out, and that they have nothing to do with Wild Dunes. And the purpose of my phone call two and a half hours later was basically to say, hey, there are a bunch of coyotes up here, if there's anything you guys can do, they're here, they're behind my house, I can see them, they're all up here after this melee two and a half hours prior to that. So, that was a little upsetting to me, that phone call, because I sort of felt, I don't have adjacent neighbors, I felt a little scared, and, yeah, my dogs had to go out that night, so I went out the front and I was scared. Since this has happened, I've done a little bit of just information gathering on my own. I called the Department of Natural Resources just to sort of see what their stance was, what would I do? She explained to me that I can put private traps in my yard, that the South Carolina laws allow us to do that within, I think, 100 yards of my home, and that they are kumbaya with the coyotes, they don't want them hurt, and they want them to live among us. Then, I went into Dave Kanowski's office, because in addition, who is at Wild Dunes, I'm sure you all know, and the gal, the night at the police department, had also suggested that just get in touch with Wild Dunes, that's their problem. So, I emailed my little recording to Dave with a, with an email that night, and I hadn't heard back from him, so I pushed in on him last week to say, hey, did you get my recording? Here's what's kind of going on. I don't know what we can do about this. What's Wild Dunes' position on this? What, I don't know a lot about what the city is planning to do, and basically have learned that, from him, that Wild Dunes has completely acquiesced all coyote control to the city. We are tax-paying members, while it may be a gated community, the cities are, the city's streets are back there, they're not private, the golf courses are semi-private and public, and that everything is, he didn't know that Chris had left Animal, the Animal Control Office. So, I guess from the perspective of a homeowner, it feels like, and he told me you can get a, I had, I learned that the traps, Chris said, yes, you need traps behind your house, there's definitely coyote activity over here, I'll get them put out. But then I learned that they were pulled maybe in December, and there are issues with getting a permit. Dave told me you can get a permit from the Department of Natural Resources in two hours, but he was gonna look into that, because he didn't know why, he didn't even, he didn't know things had been pulled, he didn't know what was going on. So, I guess I feel like, from a perspective, and just want, you won't have to hear this again, I promise, my little spiel, I'm so sorry. But it feels like this, you know, that, that everybody's doing this, I don't want to, you know, be in the midst of some people who love the coyotes and people who want to hunt them, but it's, it's a concern. Last thing, I spoke with a master trapper, because I thought, well, maybe I do need to put these traps in my yard. Great guy, learned a great deal about him, he's licensed in five states, he's trapped in Myrtle Beach, he's done controlled, quiet hunts at night, all kinds of things of that nature. And in fact, when he was a young boy, he and a buddy of his were attacked by a coyote, and his friend was bitten badly, and that's sort of probably what stayed with him to get into this, this business. It is $995 a week to have private trapping done on your property. If you don't have it near the den, which I have learned from two people, maybe up near the tee box of the fifth hole, which is, you know, I'm halfway down from there, it really wouldn't do any good, and he recommends two weeks. The last thing that I would like to share is that his, his boss, the owner of his business, and I'd be happy to share the information with you, would be more than happy to speak before you all, to let you have maybe the perspective of someone who does this for a living, the nuisance and the danger that they can pose to a community. So, that's, that's my piece, that's what I wanted to share. Thank you for indulging me again, and it would just be great to feel like there was some sort of plan that wasn't vague between Wild Dunes and IOP, and that would maybe make me feel a little better at night, taking my two sausages out.
Jillian, thank you very much, and just so you know, we are getting ready to start trapping again.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Any other?
Mr. Mayor, if we, Ms. Jillian, if we could get that contact information from you as well, from, from the trappers, that you, you contacted.
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to show that.
Thank you.
Great. Yes, sir?
Yes. Excuse me. Good evening. My name's Dr. Thomas Johnson, I live at 201 Paul Boulevard, and I've had that residence since about 2005 or six, since it was built. My wife grew up on the island, I'm an old Charleston boy, and I just have a few comments to make, consideration of the East Cooper Land Trust to apply for the city allocation for the green belt, for the exchange club. We were long-term members of the exchange club, my wife was past president, she was the second female president of the exchange club, and at that time, the exchange club was local community, Isle of Palms members, the dynamics somewhat fundamentally changed over the last five to seven years. And that being said, I have the, a copy of the original foundation of the exchange club through the beach company, and it states, through its corporation, it's to benefit the community and society. And over the last 10 or 15 years, they have raised incredible amounts of money for the children's hospital, for the boys' club, and other issues in this community. And I've seen a fundamental shift in the agenda of the exchange club that somewhat concerns me. They have, there has been a secondary council that I'm not real familiar with, but it's the community club organization, I'm not exactly sure of the terminology, but I've noticed, for instance, the raffle down at the marina, all the money did not go to the exchange club, to, it went to this secondary organization to help build a dock, and a float, and a bulkhead, and we already have traffic issues on this part of Second Avenue. I mean, the Isle of Palms Police Department, and they'll be well aware, there are a tremendous amount of people that get pulled over on the corner of Second Avenue on Palm for speeding. And then when there's, there are events that are great for society and benefit, the oyster roads, I think these things are phenomenal, but there's parking issues. And my concern is, this secondary committee that's wanting to get money from the city and from the state for the green belt, I have concerns regarding the following things: traffic, parking, and then that part of the island on Hamlin Creek, that is a big area for people that like to wakeboard and waterski, and if you ever go out there at low tide now, the sandbar is encroaching up towards the Breach Inlet, Breach Inlet sandbar is encroaching down towards there, the currents are horrendous, and I just think if we have a floating dock and benefit people in the community for good things, and I'm not saying they're, they're not good, but I'm just very concerned about the safety, the environmental impact, the parking, and I'm concerned because right up the street, there's a city, there's a city lot, down at the marina, we have several activities and several businesses that I'm sure would be glad to donate part of their time to provide the same service, without utilizing $104,000 of this city's monetary funds. And those are somewhat of my concerns, because I see people out there often, their boats are stranded, it's a rough current, and I have some sort of concerns on, it's not a true exchange club proposal, it's a secondary thing outside of their 401 contribution. And I think using city monetary funds for that, I think they could be applied elsewhere for better purposes. I think the city has a lot of opportunity, that we could provide some green belt funds elsewhere, and just watching over the last 10 years, the dynamics and the change, and what's occurring, my next-door neighbors, the Gannets, they, it's a private, it's a private boat landing, however, the company that's doing the dredging across the river, that's being utilized, we have professional oyster people and professional boaters that come off there to work their oyster beds and their monetary funds, and I'm, I'm worried about what we're really looking at and what we want to achieve for the city. I am concerned that it's not just for the benefit of others, but I'm have some issues raised, not only in safety and traffic, but in boating, and in the fact that I want to make sure the exchange club adheres to their agenda of benefiting the community, and that all money's raised are for the benefit of our community. And I've noticed a lot of fundraising projects to where they're implied through their exchange club, but the money is really going towards the building a dock and a bulkhead for the members and their constituents. And I have a little conflict of interest with that, and I would recommend that anyone that sits on the board that has a conflict of interest on that, reduce themselves from any voting status, and that's what I'd like to say, thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Anyone else, please?
Dr. Johnson, could I have your comments, please?
Actually, this was your agenda.
Okay, going once, going twice, three times, okay, moving on. Reports from the standing committees, Ways and Means, first to bat.
Ways and Means, something met last Tuesday, 5:00, all councilmembers were in attendance, we had approval of the minutes, and we immediately got into the financial statements. Through December 31st, where revenues are at 38% of the budget, expenditures at 35%, and the fund balance is $22,258. Let's see, general fund year-to-date expenditures are more closely in line with what you would expect of close to 50%, it's 42%, as we're halfway through the fiscal year. General fund revenues compared to budget prior year are at 108%, and cash balances for all funds at $1231,2018, or $17,283,000 versus $1231,2017, it's $24, excuse me, $24,849,000. I'd like to read from, I scheduled, the city treasurer compiled, this is briefly key indicators, and general fund revenues are expected levels, are at expected levels set for business, license, and building permit revenues are slightly significantly ahead of the prior year. Increases are tied almost entirely to construction activity, and as of yet, do not include license or permit fees related to the large project Wild Dunes, although the permit for the foundation work is anticipated soon. We expect these line items to continue to track ahead of budget for the remainder of the year. Still, still a little early to tell about how much. Rental license revenue is 10% ahead of prior year and 33% of budget. Local office sales tax collections are tracking at 2.5% ahead of last year. General fund expenditures are slightly behind budget and match prior year's levels as a percentage of annual budget. By indications are that the general fund expenditures will be, will be within the budget for the year. Overtime costs expected to exceed budget by approximately $80,000. Approximately $45,000 of this overage is tied to Hurricane Florence, and the city will likely receive female reimbursement. receive female reimbursement equal to $33,000 or 75% of the 45. The remaining overtime expense coverage relates primarily to coverage for vacancies in the police and fire department, and coverage for extended military leave in light duty and fire department. Total cash position is approximately $712,000 higher than in October 2018, last presentation to Ways and Means. But significantly below December 2017, and that's due, of course, to spending for offshore beach restoration project. Cash balances have increased $2.7 million so far in fiscal year 19. This is all just a point in time. Briefly, other funds, revenues from the tourism funds are all tracking above the prior year. Total increase is $167,000. Spending in the capital projects and tourism firms continue to be slow compared to budget. Several large budgeted projects, purchases haven't had significant spending, including public safety buildings, renovations, drainage, outfalls, radio replacements, and the fire ladder truck replacement. The ladder truck will not come out of 19 budget, it's going to be rebudgeted for fiscal year 20. So, that's basically a brief synopsis of the report. And I just have one more note, and that's when we get to item two on Ways and Means Committee for Consideration of Disbursements, Approvals. Item two says consideration of fiscal year 19 cost of living adjustment of 2.2% for city employees. If we notice all the other items on the agenda that require money or outlay of cash, the amount of the outlay is listed in the request. And I'm just asking in the future if the treasurer would, wouldn't mind putting the total dollar amount of that cost, even though on page 28 of our report of the package, it is clearly laid out how much the 2.2% of COLA cost is, and that's $135,861 for the year, or 1.2% of general fund expenditures budget. And with that, I'll turn the considerations over to the mayor to ask for approvals.
Okay, thank you, sir. The first one, consideration of request from the East Cooper Land Trust to apply for its city's allocation of green belt funds. I think that has been pulled from our agenda, nobody's here to speak on that tonight, is that correct?
Correct. The East Cooper Land Trust, who had originally made their request to city council to include that item on the agenda for tonight, has since requested to postpone this and withdraw their request for city council approval on this at this time. I think that the both organizations still have to iron out some details before making a proposal to city council. I have indicated to them that if they do decide to come back before the group to make their request first during the Ways and Means meeting before those report to council.
Okay, thank you. Number two, consideration of FY19 cost of living adjustment of 2.2 for our city employees. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to propose an amendment to this motion to distribute the budgeted FY19 COLA amount of, and the number I was given was 104,255, so if it's 135 or something else, whatever that correct amount is, to employees failing, falling below the living wage of $53,000 for Charleston County. That's an amendment.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on that? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I want to clarify, because we went through this at Ways and Means, and I think there's still a lot of confusion. There was a belief, I think, that, you know, the two naysayers, which were councilperson, Ferenc, and myself, are not in favor of giving raises to the appropriate levels of salary. One thing I'm going to ask of this council and the city administration, I would like to go on record requesting that the salaries of the employees, as other cities do, that all applicable overtime be made public. I think making it public, making sure that people are aware of what we're voting on, gives a whole different perspective. I don't want to even admit how much time I spent looking at these numbers. So when we hear it's $104,000, that's an unburdened number, so I just want to offer a couple of points in fact. We're getting hammered a little bit, as council, for even suggesting that we raise real estate taxes. A maximum raise of real estate taxes in 2020 is $344,000. The single COLA amount, one time, not done again, will be $208,000 fully loaded. We will have spent, just with one, almost any tax increase we could possibly have. So it's not cruelty on our parts to say, look, we don't want to be attentive to the employees. I value our employees, to be clear. I think there's a level of salary that we need to adjust. I would be way more in favor of taking the 2.2% pushing it downstream when I look at facts like, we have 12 employees over $80,000 in salary. That's not counting overtime. We have four with overtime over $100,000, right? I'm not going to bore you with any more numbers, but if you get into the numbers and you look at it, I got to ask myself, do we have to give a cost of living adjustment to people making $100,000, or should we give it to the police officers making $45,000, and the firemen, and the CDL drivers? Right? With that, I'm going to, I've said my piece, I know what the vote was last time, but I think we really need to start changing the way we look at things in this city and get more responsible to both our employees and to the citizens of this community.
Yes, sir.
I made some of these comments at last week's meeting, and I feel obliged to make them again, especially for those of you that weren't here, and for my colleagues that they would consider this. One of the things that I've found in three years of working with council is that reform does not come easy. We read the daily newspapers, and one of the things that's catching all of us, and Randy alluded to it, is the desired increased property taxes. Yet, we haven't made efforts to reform to drive some of our costs. With regards to personnel, it was alluded to a moment ago about the excessive overtime. I want you to keep these numbers in mind, the citizens need to know these numbers. We on council direct through a history of budget, of meeting creep, over 100 meetings a year to run the city. 100 meetings a year, think about that. That's two a week. When I speak to other municipal officials and I ask them to check myself if this seems unusual or not, I ask them to guess how many meetings we have. And they usually, because they serve, have an idea, and oftentimes they'll throw out 50. And when I say 100, they're flabbergasted. When you think of that, two meetings a week, that's a meeting every other workday. So we should be asking ourselves, how does staff have time to do anything when they're meeting every other day? And that requires preparation for a meeting, the meeting itself, some of which run longer than two hours, some of which, and many of which, I've seen more staff at a meeting, a committee meeting, than the actual committee members themselves. And then you've got post-meeting activity. And our poor clerk, I can't imagine what her corporal tunnel issues are. So I would ask council, I would ask the citizens to demand of it, that before we start talking about raising property taxes, we do two things. Reform our own activities. If we cut the meetings in half, we'd save one full man year, an executive position that we could fund. And look at other alternative revenue options. There are a plethora of alternative revenues, user fees, other registration fees, that the people that are using the service help pay for. It's easy to do one broad brush and raise property taxes. But I'm afraid, folks, that's the easy way out. We need to drive down and look at some other options. And with that, and given our surplus, our fund balance, we can deal with the issues that we have to deal with, and we can address and have more time to address the larger issues. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what we're hearing from councilmembers Bell and Kinghorn and Ferenc is something that's palatable for most of the folks that I've talked to on council, and that is that major budget reform is necessary. So I think that's an important preface, that this council has already, you know, started really early on the budgeting process, and we are, we've got a lot of sessions on the books, ready for us to kind of dig into what that reform looks like. When it comes to the issue of this COLA increase, I think that's a key issue considering the percentage of our budget that our salaries make up. And just this minor increase has a very material impact on our budget. The reason that I will continue to vote for this increase across the board is, I'll get the same reason I gave last time, and despite getting poked fun of a little bit from councilmember Bell, which is all good, is that we budgeted this. And the message is not, just because you budget something, you have to spend it. That was not the message intended last week. The message is, when you have a staff of people, and you communicate to them at the beginning of the year, you should expect this increase. And then you go back to them and say, you know what, we've decided that we need budget reform, and I think that these are well-crafted statements, there's a lot of rationale and logic. Unfortunately, the human reaction to that is not going to be positive, no matter what logic and rationale there is behind it. And what I'm trying to prevent is a huge impact, adverse impact to morale, and the potential for some sort of event that might result in us losing key employees, and might result in us losing not just the employees who are over 53,000, but also under the 53,000 benchmark. I 100% agree that we need to make sure that we're taking care of those who aren't at the, what's the term, I think you said, livable wage?
Livable wage.
The livable wage, 100% agree. I think we have to address that in the next budget section, session, as well as revenue sources. We've got to attack expenses and revenues all in one, but for now, the 2.2% I think has to be across the board.
Anyone else?
One more time.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one more time. I think that in doing something different now, I understand that we said we were going to do something, and so you're saying we need to do it. That was decided in June of 2018, before we were given the information that we have now. And I think had we been given the information back in June, we may have already started this change way back then. What I'm asking is, and it's not just, you know, promising that we were going to give it across the board, but think about, the guy that's down there at $39,000 is going to get a whopping 800 bucks. The ones at the top are walking around with 2,000, 2,200. And then that compounds, because when we give the merit, it goes back to what's already on top of the COLA. So what I'm saying is, instead of doing what we've always done, the way we've always done it, let's stop now. Let's say, let's take care of that gap that we have created over the years because of this across the board. We can make a minor, you know, granted, it's not going to change them leaving for a $45,000 job, because we can't do that within one year. But at least we can say, in this year, we are going to try to lower that gap between the high and the low.
I'd like to call for the vote.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the amendment?
Amendment first.
The amendment is to distribute the budgeted FY19 COLA amount of whatever it is, because I was given 104,255, to employees falling below the living wage of $53,000 for Charleston County.
Okay.
Wait, 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 wait. So is that 2.2%?
Yes.
For about low $53,000?
It will, no, it will equal, it's the combined monies that would be given to those above and below. If we combine those to $104,000 and give it only to those below 53, it'll equal about 4.4%, 4.06.
So the people below will get 4%, the people above will get zero.
Right.
Is that clear for everybody? For the vote on the amendment, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody nays?
Nay.
Okay, going back to the original motion of a 2.2 COLA, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. Number three, award of a contract to Talbot Tennis McGrath Industries in the amount of $29,437 for the resurfacing of the tennis courts, which is under our capital projects, page 62, Recreation Department. Do I hear a motion to approve?
A motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, me again. This was put forth with the question at Ways and Means about prioritization for residents and making investments that benefit the residents. And it was offered that that work is underway with the Recreation Committee, and I appreciate that, because I think we all recognize that we have a great facility that's of great service. Unfortunately, it's not always available to the residents. So rather than move forward with this now, I would propose that we have a plan from the Recreation Committee that tells us how we're going to prioritize for the residents before we keep spending money for the others surrounding communities.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to oppose this item and the rest of the items, not as I did last week, won't surprise anyone, not necessarily because they don't have merit, but because when you total them up, this is over a half a million dollars in expenses that we approved last week, and we're primed to approve this evening. A half a million dollar expenses while people on this dais are talking to the public about increasing property taxes. I think we need to, in addition to find alternative revenue, tighten our belts, and make prudent decisions. My colleague to my right has suggested one of them. Thank you.
Before we vote, I will add my two cent worth. When we talk about raising taxes, we've got some major projects ahead of us. It's not going to happen this year. We have to do the investigation work at the public safety building, which we have no idea how deep that cost is going to be. And the other one is our drainage project. We are getting phase one of that project done. We have no idea what phase two is going to cost us, but I can promise you it's going to be expensive. So raising taxes is probably not going to be now, but it's going to be in the near future.
Well, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad to hear you say that, because the first morning I was having my tea, the paper came in, and I saw you being quoted as, "We have to raise taxes to the maximum amount allowable under South Carolina law." I thought it must have been a misprint, only then to read three other papers and hear the same thing, and some reference to and suggestion that there's no other place to get revenue. Well, there is, and hopefully we will.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir. Ma'am.
I would just like to point out, and thank you, that the tennis courts are very popular with the residents, and I wouldn't want to penalize them by not repairing them as we planned for a long time. In fact, we actually were going to spend much more than this, this is a scaled-back version of that plan that our Recreation Department Director came to us with an alternative, and I appreciate the staff coming up with a different option that will cost us less money that's very needed right now.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Were all these items previously approved during the budget process last year?
Yes.
Yes, sir. They're all approved? Okay. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I just think it's only responsible to maintain our properties and the tennis courts. We're lucky to have them, and we need to maintain them and keep them safe. There are roots coming up, and they need to be maintained, and this is budgeted, and it's, I think it's like close to $40,000 under what we have budgeted. So I think it'd be irresponsible to not maintain the properties if we do have people playing on them, which we do. I mean, they're always used.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
We are, like, as councilmember Rice mentioned, they are in need of rehab. And there's been a lot of discussion from both new councilmembers this year, and, you know, councilmembers who have been serving, stating about the amount of deferred maintenance that the city has, the amount of that, you know, previous councils have dropped the ball on maintaining the properties that we have, the fact that we have to go through and put money into all their departments throughout the city because the council has failed in doing so. This is just, instead of having another deferred maintenance problem that we're going to have, you know, we're going to go through and maintain the properties that we have and keep them up and going. As for programs going on at the Rec Center, the city or the committee As for programs going on at the Rec Center, the city or the committee is working on maintaining and trying to find ways to increase the amount of citizen activity only, but we still need to have visitors over to help maintain or help utilize those programs so that we don't have enough to have sports programs with just the kids alone. So we need to have Sullivan's Island Mount Pleasant kids come over as well. So I mean, folks who are going to go through and vote against this for maintaining something, the next motion after that should be just to close the courts down.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Sandy, please.
Just a question. There's no tennis membership or anything that's assessed. It's just whoever comes and plays on the courts, right? I mean, we don't have any kind of fees attached to the tennis courts.
Well, there's fees attached with the programs that are going on.
But anybody, lessons, but not just the use of the courts? Is that the same in Wild Dunes?
Completely different.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say respectfully to Recreation, I'm going to vote for this. I wanted to make a point that we actually need to start looking at these things, so thank you.
Okay. And I think I have somebody else who'd like to...
Sure, just for the record, these, this expenditure is being funded by tourism funds, both the mini-ATM and state ATMs.
Thank you very much. Okay, hearing no other comments, all in favor of awarding this contract, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Two nays.
Yeah, as well as, I mean, as well as part grant money, so...
Yeah, because it's being offset by a $10,000 of grants.
No, not much. Just rounded up. That's the tennis, yeah, I assume courts.
Our next item on the program is going to actually have a presentation. This is for the award of the contract ATM, the amount of $21,000 for consulting services, assessment development, scope of work, bidding, construction, oversight for the Marina Bulkhead coating repainting project. Kirby, would you like to inform us?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, is this the point we want to get into?
No, so this is the award of a contract for the Marina Bulkhead coating project.
Right.
Is there a presentation with that? I did not think so.
It's under real property.
Okay, thank, I'm sorry, Kirby. I saw you sitting there going, "Come on, I got to talk sooner or later."
Kirby, why would I ask, no presentation, but certainly for real property, if you'd like to explain what this is briefly?
We don't have a motion yet.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, maybe a second? Second? Okay.
May not need one.
Come on up, give us an explanation.
You got to have a vote, you got to have a motion, second, you don't have a vote.
Okay, discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
The bulkhead at the Alapambs Marina along the Morgan Creek Edge is constructed of steel sheet piles. It's coated with coal tar epoxy. A portion of that bulkhead has corroded over time. You see the rust, particularly in the intertidal zone. This contract is to prepare the plant's specifications, administer the bidding process, and oversee the construction to facilitate the repair and rehabilitation of that bulkhead to extend its useful life.
Thank you very much. Now, I need further discussion from council. Hearing none. All in favor of going forward with this bid amount of $21,000, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Two nays. Thank you very much, and thank you, Kirby. We'll get to you later. Award contract to Motorola for a budgeted expenditure of $247,644.75 to replace 27 portable radios and 25 mobile radios in cars for the police department. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
It should be noted, Mr. Mayor, that this is a large amount, but we've been saving for these radios over the years, thanks to Councilmember Buchanan's initiative some years ago for large expenditures like this in vehicles.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, please.
Councilmember Kinghorn brought up, I thought, a very sound suggestion last time in terms of considering the mobile radios and cars, recognizing that we may be evaluating our fleet stance in the future. That being the case, I guess I would propose the question if, and perhaps to, let's see, interim chief.
She leaves, hold on a second.
Okay. You know, well, I guess, what are the thoughts around us budgeting this, but chartering the staff with defraying that cost until we have those budgetary discussions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, please.
If I may, I brought this up in public safety. I mean, the reality is, we have a lot of cars. We, by practice, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but every patrol person has a assigned car. We're an island seven miles by a half mile wide. We have three officers on duty if the sergeant is not at headquarters at any one point in time, and I believe we have, does rate 26 patrol vehicles. So to Councilman Moy's point, I think it's prudent to look at, what are we doing going forward? Are we going to keep doing this? I have suggested, and I certainly don't want this to be the next rumor at the Police Department, but, you know, we could potentially give car allowances to police officers so they have a car to do whatever they wish with, including coming to work, and have a pooled set of cars here and start cutting our fleet expense down. If that were the case, and I'm not making that as a proposal, those kinds of thoughts need to be thought thoroughly, because we have a huge fleet for a tiny island, not just police, by the way. And when we look at these radio expenditures, every time we buy a car, it's not the $38,000 for the car, it's the outfitting of the car. And I respectfully as well would think that on this particular item, there probably needs to be some more discussion around where we're going forward with these fleets, the size of the fleets, the size of the departments, and how we want to handle this, because we've got to get our arms around this budget. Contrary to what people think, we are not healthy financially on the path that we're on right now.
I would like to piggyback on that, particularly picking up as to the number of the force. Let me give you some comparison. The city of Beaufort is three times our size, so you would think their police force might be three times our size. Well, it turns out it's only half again our size. So we have approximately 25, they have approximately 50. So three times the size, but per capita, right, therefore, they have less, much less, significantly less of the force. Then take a minute and pause and think about it, which I probably should have done three years ago, but I'm a little, I'm a little slow. Half of the residents in our island are in a gated community, of which, within that gated community, there are other gates, and they have their own security force. So it shrinks our population down from 4,200 to really about 2,100. And then I've heard the argument when I opposed the last two hires of, well, in the season, of course, we quadruple, right? And that's right, we all know that, we all experience that. But guess where most of those people are? They're in Wild Dunes, which has additional security, and of course, we could hire part-time for seasonal and save ourselves a lot of money. That's an example where we can provide savings so we don't have to have two additional police cars. We don't have to have two additional or four additional radio systems. I have never felt unsafe on this island, but when you think about it, especially when you add the Wild Dunes component, it's overkill, folks. And I can give you any other number of municipalities, and you can go in and look at the data and per capita, what do they typically have? And part of their community is not gated with additional security. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember, did you happen to look at Riceville Beach?
No.
I mean, a beach town.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman of Public Safety? Yes, sir. Can you inform us about the Motorola radios and the lifespan of them, and what's required for their radios, and how long their lifespan is doomed?
The radios that we currently use have been extended. They are, they're basically obsolete now. They're moving up to a new, new system, and Motorola is not backing, they're not repairing them. So as they go down, they're out, and we're out radios, both in the cars and personal radios. The encriptions now that we have to go through and do on the radios, well, allows us to talk with Charleston County and other municipalities, will be set in these new radios. Without it, we won't be able to respond back and forth without, without it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I understand we have mutual aid agreements with other, and we need radios to be able to communicate.
Well, that's, I mean, with or without mutual aid, we need to have, I mean, we need to have, because we run through a central dispatcher in Charleston County, we need to be able to talk with them and throughout other municipalities throughout the area. But yeah, and as for, as for budgeting, I mean, this is something we'll start, we're working on, but I'm not sure that it will, Councilmember Bell, that it will be purchased prior to the, and they want to work towards it because it gets them a better rate, because they're buying it in conjunction with Charleston County. Charleston County is buying a bunch of radios as well, so we were able to get a contract for that. So there's a cost savings on that as well.
Councilperson for Enes.
Could you tell me how old these radios are?
They don't work anymore. Yeah, they're, I mean, they're, I'm...
I'm serious about, are they one, two years, five years, 10 years?
I'm, I think from the record, I think there were, yeah, there were more than that. There were more than 15 years, I believe.
15?
No.
Semi-30.
I know, I know they, when interim, chief Osery had talked about it, they're, because they're getting cycled, so anywhere between, I mean, 10 or 12 years is where you're going to get 10 years out of them. But the data in them are, it's not going to, it doesn't sustain, so they fail after a period of time.
And if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Some of the radios that have been failing, there are no, Motorola is no longer making parts to repair them, so as they fail, they can't be equipped again or refurbished for usage. Certainly, I think if there is a renowned interest, and I think it was presented at the last meeting as well, to look at the organizational structure. I know that the Police Department, the Public Safety Committee discussed that briefly at their last meeting, you know, it may, it may be prudent to defer decision on this item until those discussions are had. It would, it would require delay in those, in those radios. I don't know how, what that would affect those radios that are failing and can no longer be used, but certainly it's an option that council can consider.
Does rate to that question, can we replace on failure at this point?
That's what we're doing now.
That's what we're doing.
With the, with these same radios, as opposed to a bulk purchase?
These radios are no longer...
I understand.
You mean replacing with the new ones as they...
As they fail.
As they fail.
I mean, we don't want, we don't want officers to not be able to communicate, right? I mean...
I would have to discuss this with interim chief Osery to understand what, I guess, how the ordering works, because it is through Charleston County. But I can, I can have those answers for you.
Would it be prudent to defer?
We'll have more, yeah, I guess...
I don't see how deferring for one month until we go through these discussions could hurt.
I'd like to make a motion to defer.
Second?
How about we just withdraw?
Yeah, just withdraw the...
How about we just withdraw?
So I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Then we draw a second.
Just to clarify, that timing is not going to put us in jeopardy of getting in with Charleston County. It might, it might. Well, I think that's a concern. And the other, the other point to make is that the, we're getting a, we're selling them the old radios or some of the ones that are functioning, so we get a reduced rate if we return those. That's why the price is 247. If we delay, there might be an increase in funding, in the expense for the radios. Well, I would think that would be extremely unfortunate and counterproductive to what we're trying to do right now. We've been planning for this for a long time, and it's a big order, but we've been saving for it, and I think we need to make sure we don't miss the window of ordering with Charleston County, if it's going to save us money.
The motion's been withdrawn, but, Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that we go through...
You didn't vote on withdrawing, did we?
You don't know that the motion, the withdrawal, the motion withdrawn, is to speak with interim Osery.
And if we have to, we will have another meeting. Much to Mr. Kinghorn's...
I've been meeting with local governments for 40 years, I'm happy to meet. It's staff time that I'm concerned with.
Well, we'll have a meeting without the staff.
Alex Hughes, interim chief of Osery, in her behalf, she went home.
Sick.
Okay. Okay, so we are deferring this, this one item here.
We're withdrawing. Not deferring.
Award of a contract to Trident Construction in the amount of $95,267 for Phase 1 of the Public Safety Building remediation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second. Okay, discussion.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, please.
Well, we had two bids, Trident Construction and Hill Construction, and they came out of real property, and the vote was two to one. I voted for Hill. I thought both companies do a fine job, but I felt like Hill's presentation, they've done so much of this work. Eight of their top nine jobs in the past couple of years have all been for municipalities. So I'm still planning on supporting Hill.
Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
And I voted for Trident, basically on the fact that they did our fire station two, which was an excellent job, and I had the backing of our chief saying that they were good to work with, and, you know, I think that both of the companies gave us good information, but I feel that when you have somebody that's already done it in your own neighborhood, that that gives a little more credence, so I voted for Trident.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
And obviously, I voted for Trident. And I will tell you clearly, it was a $100,000 plus difference in the price that was a big factor in my decision. I want everyone to understand, this is Phase 1, it's to go in and understand what needs to be done. We are not awarding a contract to either of these companies to proceed with Phase 2, which is the actual repair. This is to go in and do a fairly deep forensics, you know, drilling through substrates, you know, taking core samples, looking at the roof, looking at the mechanical systems and the airflow. And my belief was, both companies, I had 100% confidence that either company could do this, but for me, saving $100,000 on Phase 1 and feeling that they could do the job, and they do have a track record having built our fire station, it was very much a fiscal debate for myself, and again, so moved.
Unless anyone else has a comment?
Anyone else?
I'd like to make one comment.
Yes, sir.
The, I think you're comparing apples to oranges, honestly, in that, there was a lot of things in the Hill contract that was included, and their overhead cost was like much lower than the Trident. And I talked with the administrator, and we felt it was pretty much, when it's all said and done, they're pretty much even, but like you said, it is only Phase 1. So the actual construction won't start for until Phase 2?
Yes, ma'am.
I do want to add that the big differential, like you mentioned, was related to the overhead and profit percentage. One was, Trident was 12%, and then for Hill, it was 4.85. However, at the presentation, Trident did mention that that figure was negotiable, so I would recommend that we do not include that figure in the motion for approval, so that I can go back and renegotiate that fee depending on the total cost of the project.
Do we need a motion on it?
Yeah.
We just need a motion to approve. We, if we don't include any, anything associated with Phase 2.
A motion subject to negotiation.
Correct.
Okay, is there any other discussions on this, except do we need to make this as an amendment on this motion? Okay. The motion is to award a contract to Trident Construction in the amount of $95...
No, no.
I'm sorry?
Okay, I thought she said without them. Go ahead.
Yeah, we do not need a motion for an amendment.
Thank you. Okay. Back to where I was. Award of contract to Trident Construction in the amount of $95,267 for Phase 1 of the Public Safety Building remediation. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Moving on. Consideration of an increase in fees for the municipal parking lots and Ocean Boulevard Orange Street parking. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And not by a second.
Well, don't you, should we make a motion for a specific amount?
Well, we're going to have a discussion on this.
It could be a motion to discuss.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to discuss. Parked increase parking.
Okay. Discussion.
I'll go unless, sir, would you like to outline with the information-
Can I make a quick request before we start? Is that a way we can put this data on the screen so the audience can see it?
Let's-
I can't see the screen.
Sure, there is.
Y'all have it on your iPads, do you not?
No, I've got it, I just, for the audience to see. I think it's-
Yes, it will take me a minute or two.
Okay.
While we're waiting, just out of curiosity for y'all, for the audience's benefit, I go to cause Charleston basketball games, and cause Charleston has upped their rates to $2 an hour with a two-hour minimum. Basketball game lasts longer than two hours. Luckily, I haven't had a ticket yet, but it's coming, I'm sure. But $2 an hour downtown year-round, and into the night.
So a little bit of the backstory is, we changed and went into an automated system a year and a half ago. It was very successful. We generated more revenue. We had less staff management of the facility. We then, in this current budget cycle, reduced that daily rate to an hourly rate and reduced the fee, and it resulted in approximately $150,000 less revenue. So given that, my proposal is going to be what's before us, and you may get a chance to see, is that we go back to what we had, but I would add an additional, I think it's 50 cents, as identified on this form prepared by staff, where we'd be generating additional revenue. And keep in mind, for our residents, that 90%, if not all, correct me if I'm wrong, of the fees that are derived from the two lots at Front Beach are non-residents' generator revenue. So we oftentimes talk about the impact that the visitors have on police protection, fire protection, trash pickup. Well, there's a way that we can have off-island residents help pay for some of our services. At some point in time, and you may hear in a later report, I hope that we'll look at some reinvesting some funds to improve that facility, because I think it's an eyesore. It's the Front Beach, our main business district, and we could do something better with that, I would hope.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll go ahead and go. So I feel strongly that we should continue to offer hourly rates in the city lots, knowing that as long as we approve a rate increase based on the tabulations that our staff has given us, we can still boost parking revenue by hundreds of thousands of dollars, but also continue to offer flexibility and reasonable price points for parking that nurture our Front Beach Business District. I would suggest a best-of-all-world solution for the upcoming season, which would be to simply charge $2 an hour in the lots, $2.50 for the street spots, while also offering an all-day option in the lots of $12, that is geared towards those who don't want to guess how long they will stay at the beach or risk having to return to add on more time. I think that combination may be our sweet spot. One reason I'm averse to reverting back to the system that we had the year before last is that continued flip-flopping from one extreme to the other, and the way we charge for parking is confusing for users, for businesses, and the general public, and it isn't good from a PR standpoint. We decided to switch to hourly last year because we wanted to both encourage people to visit Front Beach businesses during the day and encourage visitors to select the city's paid parking options at Front Beach over free parking on Palm Boulevard and elsewhere. Those are goals that may be even more important to us in the upcoming year. The significant boost we saw in transactions for lots and street spots indicates that we were successful in attracting more traffic to the city's Front Beach parking in 2018 by increasing the possibility that visitors could secure a spot with an hourly rate. In fact, we had an increase of 16,000 transactions, if I saw the data right, for street spots alone, that helped cushion the revenue loss we saw in the lots by setting the rate at a dollar an hour. What's also important, and I think is exciting, is the great energy we've seen building on Front Beach with the addition of new restaurants, and that shout-out to Poppy's Taco Spot, which is already a huge hit in the community, that we'd like to see more of that. And by making it flexible, by offering a lower price point during the day, we're helping the Front Beach Business District thrive short and long term. And in the big picture, a thriving Front Beach with a flexible parking setup offers more hospitality options for residents and vacationers who are staying on Isle of Palms, and encourages those groups to spend more of their time and money here and not go off island, and the benefits of that are many.
Thank you for the detail. Anyone else like to discuss on the options, one, two, and three? Yes, sir.
Yeah, if I may respond, the flip-flopping would be less if we just reverted to what we had done originally and not make the change that we've made. The challenge of going to an hourly versus daily is you're requiring more staff time for the law enforcement to manage the lot. In addition, in the past, most of the colleagues have said that citizens that come and go to our Front Beach and pay for that, pay at that lot and use that lot, do not shop at our restaurants or shop at our stores and eat at our restaurants. That's been repeated over and over and over again. So there's some inconsistency there, but you know my position, and you know Susan's, so.
I'd like to respond to that, if no one else wants to-
Mr. Mayor.
You gotta let it out and speak some more. One of the discussions was, was the point was brought up, with the lots, I can only imagine the man-hours it takes for somebody to walk around that lot and look at the ticket. And the problem that we had with that was, you know, tickets were upside down, tickets were whatever, but somebody, we have to have somebody walking that lot continuously. It could turn over every hour, honestly. So there's always, you know, and we, it's not, that's not where we need our BSOs. We need our BSOs out in the streets, managing the flow of traffic, managing the parking along, you know, Ocean Boulevard, managing the traffic along Palm Boulevard, and trying to, that's, that's where we need them. We don't need them stuck in a parking lot. So if we can go back to a rate, a static rate that we have, like we've had, I mean, you know, we tried something different. And one of the things is, again, is, and I believe is, or still like to make it available so residents can still park there with their stickers.
That's right.
So all residents, no matter what, can still park in the lots for free-
Right.
-as long as they have their parking stickers. And it's, it's increased revenue that was based on the people who are using it and those are the visitors.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I echo the same sentiments. I mean, we've got to look at not just revenue but controlling costs. But the other thing, I don't know how many sitting in this room, I go to downtown Charleston a lot, offer quality product and people will pay to park. And, you know, we are starting to see, you know, there's, not saying we didn't have other quality products, but the Pappys and people like that, you know, whether they're paying a couple dollars extra for parking and helping the city out is not going to be the determining factor for people coming here to visit, whether they go to Front Beach.
Anyone else?
I can.
Yes, ma'am.
I do think it will affect people if you can't park there for a couple of hours to go and eat. I mean, I just do. I think there is a mentality that you don't want to pay $10 or $15 for an all-day parking if you're going to run in and get lunch. So I'm very conflicted. I mean, I think we should offer hourly and offer daily. And yes, it did not work lowering it. I mean, I, and I was one of the people who really wanted to do that, to help the businesses. And it did offset. I mean, our local option sales, I mean, all of that is up, and I, I do think our business is growing, so I mean, in some ways, you know, you shift the money, but I'm-
We're hearing from the merchants, the revenues are down.
Well, I don't think so.
So-
For one merchant.
So going back, I mean, if we look at the options here, Option Two with an hourly rate is predicted to still bring in a half a million dollars extra in revenue. It's not dramatically different from the prediction for Option Two for a daily rate. It's, it's very close. It's only like 50, no, $40,000 difference. On top of that, if we're talking about half a million dollars, we could have one BSO manning the lot, and that salary is a very small portion of that. For the benefit that we get by offering the flexibility, there is a big difference in a price point of $2 to go for an hour to the beach, and $10 to $15, you are totally eliminating a stream of traffic of people who, for a variety of reasons, might choose Front Beach that will be discouraged from using our Front Beach lots. And that not only includes our people from, coming from in-town, from the area onto the island, but our vacationers, for example, in Wild Dunes, who might want to go to Front Beach to enjoy lunch or something like that, but have, have to look at a $10 to $15 rate just to go park there.
Just one more time.
Councilman Ward?
Is there any recommendation from staff?
Yes. And I was hoping to walk you through the schedule for the sake of everybody here.
Thank you. Thanks for pulling it up.
Sure. But it feels like everybody sort of has a grasp, but I'll still, we'll still discuss it. So the first column you can see includes the hourly, the potential revenue from an hourly rate for both the street and the lots. The second column includes including a daily rate for the lots, and then the third column for an estimated year-round kiosk. For the year-round, we use an hourly rate on both because it, it doesn't really make a lot of sense to have a daily fee during the off-monts and the lots. So the recommendation from staff, after, you know, discussing this with department heads and the personnel that was closely involved in the management of the parking lot when we took over from the lease that, and Bill Shuff, we used to manage these parking lots. Overwhelmingly, the support and the recommendation was made to move to a daily fee. One of the reasons being that seeing the activity happen at the lots during the weekends and during the day, it was, it was obvious that there was not a lot of turnover. Once people parked, they usually stayed there until about 3:00 or 4:00 when they left. So I think back in 2017, what we implemented with allowing hourly parking after 4:00 p.m. really spoke and responded to the concerns about what about the people that are just coming to have dinner, or, you know, spend the evening at the Front Beach area. Having that option available after 4:00 p.m. certainly responds to that request. I, I, I'm glad that it was brought up about the manpower that it takes on the police department to constantly monitor the parking. If it's a daily fee, they, you won't, we would only need maybe one or two monitoring it at the beginning around 10:30, 11:00 when it's first full, and then maybe one more time in the afternoon. The amount of time that it takes for, for each service officer to not only look and see whether or not they should take it, but actually look at the time and, you know, make the calculations in their head whether or not they had, they, you know, they were valid. So that's why the city staff is recommending Option Number One for the daily rate for lots, which would increase the street parking hourly, the hourly fee for the street parking on Ocean Boulevard to $2, so an increase of 50 cents. That makes us consistent with other municipalities, actually lower than the city of Charleston, which was mentioned earlier. And $10 Monday through Friday and $12 Saturdays and Sundays, which would be an increase of $2 from 2017, and also allow the possibility, the flexibility and the ability for people to pay an hourly rate after 4:00 p.m.
So moved. Second.
And I do want to add some of the notes. So street rates are higher than the lot rates to encourage more frequent turnover on the streets. Something that I do want to highlight is the number of transactions. We have seen the numbers. It's, it looks like a 15% increase of the transactions in the streets and in the lots. But I do want to caution you that this number includes the, every single transaction that happens in the kiosk. We can't really say that that means more turnover in the parking lots.
People putting more money.
Because if, if it's people putting more money or extending their time, their timeframe for their ticket, that counts as two, as two transactions. So while certainly it could be higher turnover, you know, higher transactions in the parking lot, you know, more people going to the parking lots, it can certainly be skewed by that reality, that it counts for every single time somebody puts in additional money.
Desiree, if I may, Mr. Mayor and staff, thank you for your detailed work. There is a theory in sales, if you make the sales, don't say anything else. I'm moving on staff's recommendation.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Sorry, they're moved.
Okay, just a second. Just have a second, someone to discuss.
I thought we already did.
All right.
Okay. I just want to know, this came before public safety?
Um, no.
No, this is just, okay. What is, what was, what is the thought process behind the year-round kiosks? In that we're seeing that we don't just have people here March through October, we now have parking year-round and parking signs year-round. And I, I think that we're finding that we're not just a four-month, five-month activity. I would like to hear some discussion around the year-round kiosk. Why is that just sort of not even being discussed? We don't think, we should even think about year-round?
Yes, sir.
For, for my sake, that we're talking about an increase of about $10,000 in revenue over the proposed plan, if I'm interpreting this correctly. And that's not to mention-
Where are we looking here?
The 313 versus, apples to apples.
Okay, okay.
I'm not sure what the increased staffing cost to do those four months is, but it's probably more or less a wash from a revenue perspective. And right now, we're, what we're doing is, I think, while I agree with you that for year-round, in the off-monts, the lots and the parking spaces are predominantly used by residents. And so I think reducing the staff need right now still makes sense from, from, at least from the data that I'm looking at here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And one of the things that we get from our, our local business establishments is in the off-season, they're slower, in, in order to, and they've seen a response to extended, even with the, going into October right now, with our daily rates, that their, their business still slows down. But there, as long as they're slower in the off-season, they want to be able to incentivize people to come up to the Front Beach and have lunch, have, have dinner, have whatever, partake in the businesses without being, charging an additional fee where they might not necessarily come to.
Yeah, a lot of people don't like that October and early March. They don't like it.
Councilmember-
Yeah, so I agree with, with all the comments and to Sandy's comments. I, I think there is a conversation to come back to the Public Safety Committee, but it's broader than that. It's a discussion around the other parking, you know, what we do long-term with, with Palm Boulevard and other areas of the city. And, you know, respectfully, I think administration did a good job with this, we're addressing what we've been dealing with, but I do think public safety has an obligation to come back with the bigger conversation.
Thank you. Councilmember said.
So I have, as the momentum is, seems to be going towards the all-day rate, has there been conversation or thoughts on at least providing a half-day rate that, you know, provides a lower price point for people to be able to get out there? So that it's maybe a little bit higher than it would be to pay for two half, you know, that there would be some incentive to go with the all-day if you were staying all-day, but.
We have not looked at that. We were looking at being consistent to Charleston County, the parking lot there, and also looking at trying to be as simple as possible, because all of this has to be conveyed to the public via messaging. And having an hourly rate plus an all-day rate, I think it makes it confusing adding another alternative. And frankly, I, you know, after talking to the staff, we don't think that it's going, having a daily fee necessarily going to affect the traffic at Front Beach, particularly in the summer seasons. We see a, a parking lot that's always full, constantly full, and it presents, you know, a revenue-generating opportunity for the city. Going with that option, we're looking at a potential revenue of $947,483 for a season.
Desiree, if I'm not mistaken, I think we're still under Charleston County parks, are we not?
I was going to ask that question.
Correct. Well, the, the weekly rate is the same. It's $10 Monday through Friday, but on the weekends, their rate is $15, and ours would be 12.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else? Last chance.
One more question. Okay, the, those are the, our, what's the hourly rate in the county, or do they not have an hourly rate?
They do not have an hourly rate.
Okay. Sorry.
So are we voting on Option One?
We're voting.
Revoting the motion.
Daily Option One.
Daily, daily rate, Option One.
For lots. For lots. $947,40. $947, 40.
Increasing the on-street parking fee to $2, round 150.
Correct. I'm just hoping that this is the end of it.
We are too, but we're trying to raise some funds.
Well, we understand. People are, they like clear direction and consistency from us. Hopefully, this will do it.
$2, $10 for weekdays and $12 for Sundays and Saturdays.
Well, I want to make one, one comment to, to that. I think consistence, I agree with consistency, but we, you know, just as we have cost of living adjustments throughout the years, we will increase pricing costs just because that's the nature of the world we live in with inflation. So, there should be consistency in the way that we increase our prices, but we should anticipate future, probably not next year, but maybe.
Thank you. Good point.
A clarification for the, we're planning on having an hourly rate after four for the lots, and that will be?
Um, that is not included in it. We don't, it's not included in the proposal. It's certainly something that I don't think it's going to impact the revenue projections significantly.
But are you thinking $2 an hour or?
Be the same.
That'd be.
Keep it the same.
It's usually a, a, a lower fee than on the street against a reduced turnover, so it could be 150.
Why not keep it the same?
Or keep it the same.
Just keep it the same.
Let's make it, make it change.
So, we're looking at this.
Correct. We're voting on that, right there.
This and this is going.
Right.
Right in the middle of our chart.
Can we call for the vote?
Yes, sir. All those in favor of the $2 street parking, $10 for Monday through Friday, $12 for Saturday and Sunday. That is the motion. We had a second. Any further discussion?
I'll just say, I'm not, I'm voting no, not because I don't think we need to do something to increase revenue, but that I still think we should hold on to an hourly rate throughout the day.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay. All right.
Two nays.
And we've increased our rates. Okay, moving on. Consideration of an award of a contract to Carolina Professional Builders, LLC in the amount of $129,475 for the repair and renovation of the Public Works Workshop. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Question for, to Chair of Public Works.
Yes.
Uh, I was talking to Larry Cantley this afternoon, and he says, you know, I'm like, what, what, what's the scope of this work? And it says repair and renovation, you know, just get it on the, get it on the agenda in a clear, concise manner. But it's much more than that, is it not?
It's replacing the roof, replacing the bay doors.
Three of them.
Yes, it's very, it's, and this is something that was in our budget.
Right.
And we had an RFP, and actually, I think I'll ask Desiree to speak, because she opened the bids and, so.
Um, well, we requested this item to be on the agenda, and, um, and we were not able to present this before Ways and Means because we opened it on the 17th, so two days after the launch. We budgeted the city's F-119 budgeting for $140,000 to replace the roof, replace the bay doors, and do some other minor maintenance-related improvements that were identified in the Hill Report. And also, we budgeted $25,000 to reconfigure the office space to be able to accommodate the new Assistant Public Works position that we're going to be hiring. So, this is, this is a recommendation. We did put out a, a request for bids, we received three bids, and this was the lowest bid. It is a local, a local contractor that we have experience with, so we're fully recommending the, the award of this contract. The reason why we requested to put it on the agenda this, this month and avoid delaying it until it goes through the committee process in February, is we given the contract would give 90 days to the contractor to complete the work, and if we go ahead and do it now, they could be done by the end of April and avoiding the busy summer season, which could disrupt the Public Works operations.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A very important person there.
This is a protest?
The lowest budget on the city, so we're going to let him talk as long as he wants.
Quickly, the, the, since this amount came in, we did have a conversation with the contractor, and we would like to, if, if we could, add electronic motors to the four large doors.
Three.
I'm sorry, three, three large doors at a cost of $7,900 in addition to the amount that you have there in front.
What's the budget called for? 140?
Yes.
140.
Right, we'd still be under budget.
I'll make, is that an amendment?
Second.
It would be a total of 137, 375.
Three.
Without contingency.
So, we do this. A motion or amendment first?
Amendment.
Okay. We have a motion for the amendment and a second. All those in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Two nays. One just amendment. Now, for the original motion for Carolina Professional Builders, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Thank you very much.
Looking for minutes.
Before you leave?
Yeah.
Um, we've talked a lot about our budget and spending money. We are going to be looking forward in the future, in our next couple of months-
Yes.
About trying to cut costs in the city. Is that correct?
That is most certainly correct.
Just making sure that everybody hears that we know that we're in, in need of money. We need to save money as much as possible. We've got a meeting coming up, one, the 31st.
January 31st, and that's devoted solely to talk about ways of revenue recognition.
Raising revenue.
If I may, to support the mayor's comments and the chair of Ways and Means, we all know that the biggest part of our budget is personnel. One of the best ways you can reduce the personnel budget is through attrition. And last count, I think we had five open spots for law enforcement. So, there's an opportunity there that's right upon us.
Thank you. Okay. Public safety.
Yeah, um, I'll give it a try. We don't have minutes, but I'm going to shoot from the hip. The Public Safety Committee did meet January 10th in conference room. We had, um, some, some of the same commenters here tonight that spoke both on coyote issues, and, um, I did have a follow-up meeting with the mayor and, um, the Coyote Coalition a couple of days later. We talked about those, those, some of those issues as well. Under old business, always discussion of parking and traffic issues. We had, we had update, we're going to have an update on the public transit initiative, but that meeting always follows the, our public safety meeting, um, so that'll be in the next month's meetings. We are working on a update of the Waterway Boulevard Multi Youth Path Improvement Project. So, the staff is working with Charleston County to figure out pricing for that as well. And anybody can add in any of this at any time if they want, so. Under new business, we had consideration of a cancer benefit bike ride. Lowville, Lowvilo is a city-sponsored event. It's a bike ride that's going to happen. It's, it's a, it's a big bike ride, and, uh, so I'd like to go ahead and make a motion at this time to consider Lowvilo as a city-sponsored event.
Oh, second.
Second.
And for discussion, um, it's a bike ride that they're, they're planning, it's going throughout, um, Charleston County, and they're basically just coming through the Isle of Palms, and we're just have to have a, um, our, a certain amount of staff available to get them to, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may also, they're coming through whether we're city-sponsored or not.
Correct. Right, yeah, that's exactly it, right.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's whether we want to clear the roads, it's, I forget the terminology, but it's a rules of the road ride, yeah.
So, yeah, so we're just going to have extra staff available, so when they do, I mean, they have to stop at all the stop signs, get to stop at all the stoplights.
Right.
So, it'll be something different than what we're used to right now, so. But, um, it's called Rules of the Road. Yes, go ahead.
If I may add, I had a conversation this morning with the Chief of Street, and we do, we believe that we can support the event by, with the city personnel, so it would not result in overtime expenses for the city.
And that was, yep.
All they're requesting and what we recommended to provide is an officer at the intersection of the IOP connector and Palm Boulevard. Between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m., and that's when, that, those are the, the hours where we're expecting to have the riders come through. The first one is expected around 8:15, and then the last one expected to come around 10:00 a.m. It could be a little longer. But it is a rules of the road, and, uh, they're having, it's a fundraising event, like we said, for the MUSC home center, to be held on November 2nd of 2019. And they have a 25, a 50, and a 100-mile ride, and only the 100-mile riders would come through, through the city. They would come through Sullivan's Island, through Bridge and Litt, they would make a turn, a right turn on Fork Avenue, then go down Carolina and then Ocean, and then connect over here towards the connector to Exeter Island.
So, my answer, uh, excuse me, my, my question at that meeting was, um, if you could get some numbers, see, see how much it would be costing us, but what I, what I'm getting from you, there will be no cost.
There would be no overtime cost.
Okay.
They're going to be in the middle of the road? I mean, we don't have bike paths where these folks can be in bike paths. Are the roads going to be closed?
No.
We're not closing any roads. They're driving, they're riding through the shoulders of the street or the bike lanes where, where the bike lanes are available. So, it's a rules of the road. It would be the same as if they were just riding.
Well, if they're like Waterway Boulevard, they're in the middle.
If you don't mind, um, like the Battery to the Beach, it's the same path along Palm Boulevard, down Charleston Boulevard, Ocean Boulevard, and then across the bridge. Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Um, I, I'm supportive of, of this project, but I have a, a general request of the Public Safety Committee for city-sponsored events, which is, in the past, I think folks have, have come to either council or the Public Safety Committee and requested city-sponsored status, and they've been told, well, we already have something planned, or there's, there's some sort of legacy of events that are planned. Just some clarity and guidance for folks who want us to apply, that we at least have some sort of protocol and policy for, this is when you need to have your submissions in, and this is the types of things that we accept, and at least some sort of guidance for people applying.
We are looking at a policy to present, um, as a recommendation from staff to the public safety meetings at the next meeting.
Okay.
Watched it ahead of you.
Good job.
It will make it easier on us as well, because there has not, to be, you know, frank, there have not been a consistent approach to these events. Some of are approved, some are not, and because there has been a history of approving events that are not in this pre-approved list, we feel a responsibility to bring it to board through council for the group to make that decision. But certainly, I think we need some consistent, um, policy that we could, that the staff could follow whenever we get requests such as this.
So, a point of clarification, then this is in addition to that list we had of all the, those that have already pre-approved?
Well, you would not be, you would not necessarily be approving this as an annual event.
This, this one time?
Just for this year. Certainly, they can come back.
But we do have a list of pre-approved annuals.
Correct. And, and as was mentioned before-
Coming anyway.
They could, I mean, they're coming anyways. They're going to be here anyways. So, whether we make this, we make this a city-sponsored event, so the fact that we can have our police help facilitate them throughout the island and off, whether we make it a city-sponsored or not event or not, they're coming, so.
Make it safe.
We're just make it safer for everybody, throughout the route.
And a very worthy cause. Yes.
Can we vote on it?
I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion, since it is such a worthy cause, that all of council is required to wear spandex that day. And city staff can take pictures of us.
You are riding a 100-mile ride.
Thank you again.
Be happy to.
Okay, good.
Me too, in a car.
So, Ryan, you made a motion?
Yes, yes. It was a second.
Any other discussions?
Yeah, it was.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?
Under new business, we still can, we, um, discussed the replacement of patrol vehicles for the capital improvements, discussed budgeted replacements of, uh, pickup truck, discussed capital impro, or capital expenditures. We also discussed, uh, discussion of the police organizational structure, job responsibilities, and roles. And that's something that will continue, especially through the budgeting process. Discuss the impact of the, the fiscal night, the night cola adjustment for the police and the fire department, and, uh, further discussion of our budget and our capital plan. The, um, we do not have that. Our next meeting date is scheduled, yes?
E1.
Oh, yeah, it's a big one. And it was, well, we had discussion, well, one of the things we had discussion about was replacement of a fire truck, and we had, we had a lot of discussion at our Ways and Means meeting about this, but I'll go ahead and hit on it. The city was able to, instead of purchasing a new fire truck, was able to go through and refurbish one of our existing fire trucks, ladder trucks, um, to the tune of a savings of, I don't know, $700,000 or something, somewhere close to that.
Close to $800,000.
Almost $800,000, to give us a, a fire truck that will, as they said, will be like new, and would not be able to tell the difference between a new fire truck and this refurbished fire truck. So, um, it's, I'm glad that the chief took the initiative to go through and refurbish the truck at a point now where it can be refurbished, a few years down the road, I think we're beyond it. So, thank you. But we do have a next meeting, it's February 4th, and, um, that was it.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, Ryan, for, without having to.
May I offer a procedural motion that we go next to the Real Property Committee, so that the citizens that have had staying power, and they're dying to hear Kirby, could hear Kirby?
I think we can do that.
Just suspend the rules of orders.
Suspend the rules of orders. Just move this one forward.
Okay, okay, the real-
Kirby. Second.
You gotta suspend the rules of order. Second, you gotta get a vote.
Yeah, get a vote.
All in favor?
All in favor? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So, the Real Property Committee met at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday, January 9th. All members were present. We, um, first had citizens' comments. Jim Ri commented on the Marina, talking about making investments at such time that the Marina is cash flow positive. Brian Barrigan, Barrigan made comments for the Marina tenants, um, to let people know the underground storage tank project began. Those are, there's now a hole in the ground, and the store down there will be closed beginning January 21st. He also had recommended that city consider deeding the piece of land that we have at 42nd Avenue to the Marina site. Just a recommendation. Old business, we had an update regarding 1100 Palm and the right-of-way. That's the property that we've been dealing with for quite a while. That's now concluded. We did move forward to approve selling that 850 square feet right-of-way, so that a clear title could be granted to the owner for, uh, there's a price in here somewhere, it does, $10,725. That passed unanimously. We had discussions of alternatives available to optimize a municipal parking lot on Pavilion Boulevard, and this to Ted's comments earlier. We don't think we're optimizing that, and we had discussion around what we are allowed to do. There was earlier discussion that a portion of the funds purchased property was from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, stating no property acquired using those funds or with the assistance of those funds shall be converted to other than public outdoor recreation use. City administration looked at that, didn't get a lot of guidance back from, from, from City administration looked at that, didn't get a lot of guidance back from, from those folks, as I understand. So what we're doing is we're gonna move forward with requests for information, where interested parties can come forward in a public-private partnership manner with recommendations, nothing binding, but to give us ideas on the potential uses of that property, and all agreed and voted to put that forward. Status of the Marina Restaurant Assessment and the Lease RFP. We, a contract's been executed with Hill Construction for a comprehensive assessment of the Morgan Creek Grill building. With the work underway, we're hopeful that a report will be ready in February on that. So what we're trying to do is a very serialized, thoughtful approach to understanding what repairs need to go into that building, before jumping into an RFP process on the restaurant without the knowledge we have to do that. Project, that project's was scheduled to begin on January 21st. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the, that's the tank itself. That's gonna take six to eight weeks. That's, that's barring no unforeseen things underneath that tank, which so far, I haven't heard anything about. Moving to new business, results of the Design Build RFP, it's the remediation of the public safety building, we already covered. I'm gonna skip the other that we already covered. See, that's a good thing, when you do Ways and Means. Update on the Marina docks rehabilitation project, which is why Kirby is patiently sitting there. So we, we were looking at and had very lengthy discussions accompanied with drawings on what the options are for phased approach to dock repairs. So I think you'll all hopefully remember that we are moving forward with the project that had previously been discussed, which is the fuel dock replacement in concert with the underground storage tank. This is not that. This is what we could do next, pending funding, and a three-phased approach, and at that point, I am gonna turn it over to Kirby, so he can do a much better job than I will explaining this.
Thank you.
I think he's done this before.
It's multimedia. Thank you. So, at the outset of this project, with regard to the rehabilitation of the Marina docks, we were charged by the committee, the Real Property Committee, to come up with rehabilitation, a rehabilitation program for the docks that essentially tries to mimic the existing marina, replace it in kind, but upgrade it to be ADA compliant. So the first slide here tonight just shows, reminds everybody what the existing marina layout is. Fuel dock in this area, Morgan Creek, several single-loaded slips here, the boat ramp in the middle, smaller slip here, the side type dockage here, here, the Intra-Costal Dock, which is shared by Morgan Creek Grill and Marina Operator here, and then headway, water sports dock on the far end, on the Intra-Costal water ramp. The first option that we came to replace these docks really was a phased approach, and we know from our previous efforts at the site, in addition to recent feedback from the marina operator and observations at the site, that the fuel dock is, all the docks on Morgan Creek are in very, very bad shape, and are in need of really immediate replacement. But the fuel dock, since it carries a fuel, has a potential environmental burden associated with it if fuel system were to fail, based on the failure of the docks. That was kind of the priority to look at, in terms of the first phase of replacement. So replacing that, and it's generally its same configuration, is pretty straightforward. Then moving over to these docks in this area, the existing docks in that area, as many of you know and recognize, are aged, but also the finger piers are twisted, and they angle and they twist, and they can, they can be quite unstable to walk on. And that's been a constant issue out of the marina for many years. So this layout takes that into consideration, widens those finger piers up to current industry standard widths, five or six feet. The current, the current fingers are only four feet wide. It just is very difficult to get a, such a narrow finger to stay, stable. It narrows, it expands those fingers. Instead of two boats in one boat slip in a single-loaded capacity, we have two boats between fingers in a double-loaded capacity. This is more typical in the current marina design field, just to save money and still provide boaters adequate access to a finger pier on one side of their boat. It also helps constrain space a little bit, which we have spatial limitations here at the site. So we've got the same types of uses and slips in this area. ADA access is provided via an 80-foot gangway down to the slips to create barrier-free access. Boat ramp remains the same. This area includes a small staging dock for boat ramp patrons, and then a side-type configuration, similar to, not exactly the same as the current configuration, very minor change was executed in here, just to provide additional safety and maneuvering room. And then the Intra-Costal Dock is shown as in previous concept that we developed, shifted out, the finger piers were removed. We understand from the operator, from the folks at Morgan Creek Grill, that the finger piers are too short, and they're not really viable. So in this scenario, we take those finger piers off, we take the morning piles off, which are really not used at all, and shift that dock out to make it a side-type dock. And ADA gangway is provided to both of these as well. The water sports dock would receive an ADA gangway as well, as well as a small pony float to receive that gangway in that area. That's, that's the first, first concept. One, the estimated cost for Phase 1 of this redevelopment plan is $735,000, inclusive of all the utilities on that dock, which include fuel, marine pumpout, electricity, and potable water, as well as the little hut that's out there, the fuel hut, where the point of sale occurs.
That's just for the fuel dock?
That's just for the dark blue and fuel dock.
I thought you said all of Concept 8 was only $735,000.
That'd be great. Area 8.
Okay, there you go.
The entirety of this, this project is estimated at $2.84 million. This next concept we came up with was aimed at providing a little bit more staging dock space at the boat ramp, and to alleviate congestion in the boat ramp area by providing a separation of this dock area from boaters using the boat ramp, a solid dock here that boaters could launch, tie their boat to, go far, and come back down, an ADA accessible gangway to retrieve their boat. It eliminates a little bit of the marina aspect of boaters that are utilizing these docks coming into and out of the boat ramp, just again, in summertime, seasonal condition, it would substantially alleviate traffic. This option, however, extends, due to the presence of this ADA gangway, extends this dock a little bit farther out into Morgan Creek than the existing marina protrudes. In our previous work efforts, we had contacted OCRM and the Army Corps of Engineers, who are the two primary regulatory bodies who would oversee permitting for the replacement of these docks, and talked to them about potential further encroachment out into Morgan Creek. And they offered that it generally wouldn't be a problem so long as it wasn't too aggressive. This, this extends about 30 feet out farther into the creek. It would receive a little bit more scrutiny than the previous option that stays completely within the footprint of the existing marina facility, but we do not think it would be too difficult to permit. But still within the parameters of the Dewey's extension that they're proposing as well? Yes, yes, indeed. So this is an option. It also creates a little bit more space inside this docked area for maneuvering, and provides some slips out at the end here that could be used for up to 40-foot vessels, or a larger number of smaller vessels. That was the second concept we came up with. We presented that to Real Property a few months ago. Councilmember Foren's had some comments and concerns about pushing out past the limit, and how that might affect regulatory permitting, and we went back and looked at bringing that in, in a, in a third concept. And with this concept, we reoriented all this stage we're saying, this stage we're doing, we simply reoriented the ADA gangway to be shore parallel, and provided a. Kirby, if you may, would you back up one, please?
Sure.
To Concept 2.
Yes.
The other portion here you didn't mention is the additional slips at the end, which the marina operator has been advocating for, and in my notes as well, had stated that he would pay $35,000 extra to have that, in order to create space that he would dedicate to residents for residential slips. So, I'm sorry, $30,000. I just stopped it. Brian won't mind.
He's still negotiating.
Yes, exactly. But, but I think the significant piece of that, and that extra space on Concept 2 and pushing it out, you cannot do that when you pull it back in.
Kirby, if you don't mind my saying, I used to own a marina down at Bridge Inn, and next door to me is the boathouse, and it has some little finger docks like that inside there. And when the water's rolling and there's a little bit of wind.
That's impossible, yeah.
It's very tough to navigate in that tight space, just from my phone view, being a boater and.
I agree with you, and, and I'm not familiar with, I've been by there, I have to study. These slips are sized specifically to accommodate larger vessels, so they're wide, wide slips, there's no warning piles, there's a dock on both sides. I'm advocating anyone playing bumper boats, but the slips are wide to provide the appropriate room for navigation and out at the, at all times. Thank you. Thank you, Kirby.
I had the question at the meeting, and I still have the question, is I don't understand why we're doing that. Why are we pushing it out? Why are we putting more things at the end? Why can't we just go with Concept 3 that keeps it within? You don't have the permitting problems, you don't have the congestion down at the end. Now, you do show that this means that because we have to have that ADA gangplank, that it's gonna be narrow down at this end.
Sure, yeah. So, great question. The, in this concept, as I mentioned, we reoriented the ADA gangway from Concept 2, which was shore perpendicular, to be shore parallel. That allows us to bring this outer dock in within the existing footprint of the marina, should facilitate regulatory review. It's just one less thing that they have to look at, or that folks outside the direct regulatory bodies can comment on. So by doing so, we constrict this space at this end of the, of this dock area to 41 feet. And if you can go back, Desiree, to the existing conditions, I'll go to the first one. In here, we have a similar width, it's 51 feet. Brian's got a couple of jet docks in this area, and then you can see it immediately expands and gets wider as you go out. Now, if we go back to Concept 3, sorry.
No, you're good.
It, it, just by the nature of the geometry that's necessary to accommodate that wider and longer ADA gangway, and this wider dock, we're constricted with that 41 feet for a pretty substantial distance, which could make getting boats in and out here a little bit more difficult, particularly for vessels 18 or 20 feet. So it could be a little bit challenging. We don't think that expanding very slightly past the existing footprint of the marinas will result in an exceptionally arduous regulatory hurdle, and it will provide more navigation space in here, regardless of whether or not you do the additional fingers at the end. That's, that's, you know, neither here nor there, in terms of the encroachment conversation. But in this scenario, by pushing that out a little bit, it does provide the opportunity to put a few more linear feet of dockage out there.
One quick question. The distance between those little finger piers at the end, the distance between the outside dock and that inner part, how, how many feet is there?
I don't have that convention.
I bet it's not 51.
It's, it's more than, it's more than 51. I think it's about 60 or 65 feet.
So you don't have the restriction even when you put all that? My question is, why are we just doing that at the end? I'm not sure.
Just to try to add a few more linear feet of dockage. We haven't agreed to do anything yet.
So, Kirby, using your previous term, which I like, previous work effort, if you were to overlay your previous work effort against those concepts regarding just the dockage, which would be most similar?
This one. The similarities being, this, that's, this being.
The reason why I ask that for my colleague's benefit is, you'll recall, that was a very comprehensive, arduous process, included a lot of citizen input. And I would hate for us to have the benefit of all that citizen participation, and then present something that doesn't look like what they gave us feedback, and I think we agreed in large part to the concept. We all know it was the financing mechanism that tanked it. But this is an incremental approach. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so if I may, on the whole thing, because we're saying, why are we doing anything? We haven't agreed to do anything, right? Additional conversation with Brian Barrigan was, what is labeled there is Phase 1, would we be willing as a council to do that which is in gold there, Phase 2 before doing Phase 1? And it's, it's a fluid discussion. And, and I think, for me, what everyone's gotta think of, and I'll go to some of the comments I made at the meeting, we own repairing the docks. We don't own rebuilding, renovating anything, right? So there's a minimum we can do that we're required by lease to do. I hate this lease, I've been very public about that. Brian knows that. I think as we look at this, and I asked him in the meeting, we've got to look at the city-owned asset, and the money we have to spend for the best return for the residents and the marina, right? So I think there's a lot of room for discussion here with the marina operator. If we choose to move forward, what does this mean to the residents? I don't think the predominant thought on the Real Property Committee is, we wanna just make this a much better money-making opportunity for the marina operator that means absolutely nothing to the residents. So those are the trade-offs in there, that frankly would be flushed out before the full council, they're not gonna be decided in Real Property. And how much do we wanna spend, over what period of time, and do we have the money?
I think Tim Ward is.
Well, I'm asking a big, big picture question. Where are we in this process? When are we gonna do this? Do we have a timetable? Where's the money coming from?
I can ask a question.
I can talk a little bit about the first questions you asked, where are we in the process?
I think he's more.
Go ahead, please.
I don't know about the last one.
No, no, no.
So we've come up with these concepts. The next stage in this process would be to prepare permit applications to execute one or a combination of these concepts.
Permitting for all of it.
And, and that's exactly right. What we would do.
Would be to apply for permits to rehabilitate the entirety of the, of the docks as shown. That process, right now, is, I would say, a minimum of a year, depending on what happens. Longer, could be even longer. So I think it's important to start that process now, to get the applications in, get them developed, get them submitted, and then receive your permit. And just because you get a permit doesn't mean you have to build the docks. And just because you get a permit that has these three little appendages, doesn't mean you have to build. And the permits are good for how long? The permits will be good for five years, with a pretty fundamental process to get another five years on top of them. So you could get a permit here in 2020, that could take you to 2030 to execute these. In addition, once you have these permits in place, I don't wanna say they're easy to modify, but if you wanted to change this around, or change a portion of the modification process on a small piece of wood, move fingers around or something, it's fairly straightforward, and generally can be done without public comment periods and things of that nature, so.
So your answer 1, tends to lead to answer 2 for me, is that since we don't have any more lease payments, we save that money, we put it aside, so we have the time to build it, we got it.
We got $300,000 a year, I think, is what we're doing.
A little over $300,000 a year. Five years, that'll be 1.5. Of course, the cost is gonna go up between now and then, but that answers my question. Thank you.
And so, in that regard, I can't emphasize enough that we can't lose sight, that we want the businesses to be successful. When we talk about driving traffic to the Front Beach, we talk about supporting the businesses at Front Beach, it seems to me that oftentimes, there's a different dichotomy. Maybe it's because we're the landlord, maybe we'd rather not be the landlord, but we are. But there's two things. Have a quality product, provide support for our citizens in something that they want, they spent a lot of time giving us feedback, and doing something that is constructive for the businesses to succeed, which in turn generates more revenue for us.
One comment to that, everybody needs to keep in mind, this lease virtually prohibits us from benefiting when the business increases. And that's a long discussion, we don't need to go in here, but, but we are, we get a percentage of profit, not revenue, over and above a certain amount. So as we look at these investments, they are looked at differently.
Well, and we're also just talking about, one, a multitude of tenants.
Exactly. That's one lease, and I, I just wish you would frame it in a positive. That's one lease, and I just wish you would frame it in a positive light, rather than a negative.
I would if I felt like it.
And we do want... Please don't interrupt me. We do want the businesses to succeed, and we need a safe, functioning marina. And right now, the docks are not safe. We need to really consider the ramp, and making the ramp safer and more user-friendly, the parking lot, all of it. So, I think we should all keep our eye on the prize, which is a functioning, profitable marina that the residents can be proud of. So...
Money, money, money.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I've got a question for Mr. Kirby. This is, maybe I'm just not quite understanding, specific to Phase 3, taking out the finger docks on the original, the current. And I ask because we use those a lot, especially when we go to Morgan Creek Grill.
These?
Yeah. Taking those out, to me, feels like we would be losing linear feet. So, I guess if you could explain that a little bit.
You would be losing linear footage, but what we found through our previous work efforts and feedback that we got from Carla and Jay and Brian at the marina was that the configuration of those finger piers was such that it was conducive, maybe, to smaller vessels, but not longer vessels. I think with the morning pile out past the end of the finger piers, the slips, if you will, inclusive of the space between the morning pile and the base of the dock, is 32 feet, 36 feet, something like that. But the effective use, the effective length of that slip is really the length of the finger pier, which is only partway, half of that or something. So, through our previous efforts, it was identified that the main dock is in good shape. It's 15 years older, so you've got some useful life on it left. But removing the finger piers and creating a side-tie dockage scenario in that area would be a cost-effective solution to increase usage on the dock for a variety of different-sized vessels. Since that time, we've also had discussions of potentially lengthening the finger piers to a full length, taking the existing ones out, putting full-length finger piers in. That's something else that could be done.
And we do have to look at which businesses are appended to which. The gold is strictly under the marina operator. We absolutely, at some point in time, those finger docks are a mess, right? So, as we look to Morgan Creek Grill, and I completely agree, to optimize that, it's a waterfront restaurant. It has a fairly useless dock right now. Not too many people want to tie up on those half docks. When we look at and bring forward through Real Property, whatever that proposal is, we'd have to look at the order that we make these investments as well. I can't imagine, whether it's Jay and Carla, or anybody else, coming in here and saying, "Well, this is an acceptable dock for us to rebid and get into that restaurant configuration."
Yeah. And another driver of this planning process was the condition of the docks themselves. As I mentioned, the Intracoastal Dock is in fair, good, serviceable condition, as is the Watersports Dock. The docks along Morgan Creek have reached the end of their useful life. They're past the end of their useful life. Major repairs are having to be executed to these docks on a regular basis. The utilities in this area have been failing. The docks out here are failing on a regular basis. So, it's been our recommendation that not only the docks, but the utilities on those docks need to be replaced as soon as possible.
Question about the cost of the different concepts. I know you said Concept 1 was 2.84 million estimate.
Yes.
Okay.
So...
What's the difference with the other?
Redevelopment Concept 1 was 2.84 million. Concept 2 is about $100,000 more, 2.94. And Concept 3 is very similar to Concept 1. So, back at 2.94.
Kirby.
Yes, sir.
You said it's going to take a year, at least, to get this permit.
Yes, sir.
And we're talking, you know, our voters were pretty clear as for the marina redevelopment, $5.5 million.
Yes, sir.
But we know that we need to keep up these docks. So, as we repay off our debt next month, that's 330,000 a year, and then another year would be 330,000. That almost pays for that fuel dock. That'd be a smart thing for us to lean towards, and try to do it in stages. That's just me thinking out loud.
And yes, and we...
That is a discussion.
We are working on a perform analysis of where we can find the funding to cover this expense. We are looking for some direction from council, conceptually, what you all like in terms of these three concepts. As Kirby already mentioned, this process takes, it could take over a year. So, if we have some direction in terms of what concept out of the three City Council needs to like better, we can certainly move forward with permitting. That does, again, it's a conceptual drawing, so changes could be made as we go along. But we need some sort of direction so that we can start the permitting process and avoid delaying this any further, because the condition of those docks is therefore shaped. And I think everybody recommends...
So, we can make a decision tonight?
The goal is to have some direction from City Council. I think the Real Property Committee had the discussion and felt like this decision should be made by full council, rather than them making a recommendation.
Therefore, I move that it be Concept 2, and in large part, based upon the citizens' input we received previously.
Can I ask a point of... I don't think we've gotten the total...
Second, first. That's right. I'll second.
I was going to ask, okay. Can we have the total cost estimate for all concepts before we start voting on them?
2.8, the second one was 2.9.
2.9.
2.9 on the second one.
That's present value, dollars.
2.8 per Concept 1 and 3, and 2.9 for Concept 2.
Correct.
A $100,000 difference.
Can we do a straw, though, by council, for 1, 2, and 3? Just for the...
We have a motion.
A motion to take 2.
Put it to bed. Oh, yeah. You have a motion, that's second.
Yeah. I have a second. So, for discussion, and we only get to do this once, right? And to councilman's comment, right? It's a $100,000 difference to do what the marina operator and ATM has recommended as the best solution overall. How we utilize that, and whether part of it's dedicated to residents and all that, I think is a much further discussion with the marina operator. But I don't think any of us are probably smarter than marina operator and ATM on what that is. Personally, I would support 2, because you are optimizing this long past our lifetimes.
Can we look at 2 one more time, please?
That is 2.
There's 2.
I just changed it.
Can we look at Concept 2 again? Okay. Okay. Let's move.
All those in favor of Concept 2, sticking up for saying aye?
Aye.
Nays? What nay?
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks, Kirby.
And they're all good-looking, by the way.
Yeah.
I just hate little docks and try big docks.
Okay. I'm still in the Real Property Committee.
Thank you, Kirby.
Thank you. New business, we had discussion of procuring real estate services for the restaurant lease art process. What we're looking at there, as I mentioned earlier...
I'm sorry.
Yeah. This is her favorite as well, is, once we have the forensic fact on the restaurant, is engaging to have a real estate professional who has expertise in waterside properties to help us with the process, and how we optimize the value of the restaurant, get the most return out of the property that we own, particularly what it could mean to the marina, what it could mean to the residents. Really, part of this gets a little bit more complicated discussion. I'll leave that map up there. So, if you look at that stretch all the way over, which is the terminus of 41st Avenue, you look at where Title Wave is, the discussion relative to Brian Barrigan bringing up and saying, "Can you, in essence, make 41st Avenue no longer a road?" Which has a process to do that, right? We have the ability to do it. It would require an ordinance and work through the council and with legal. That property could be appended to the existing lease. It could be kept separate. It certainly creates an opportunity with the Morgan Creek Grill to have expanded parking without arguing about parking on a constant basis. And Title Wave leases up roughly at the same time as the Morgan Creek Grill. So, the complete conversation was, as we go forward in this with real estate consultation that's beyond our means, to look at all of the property that's available to the city under the lease and to optimize the value to this for what we all want and the residents want out of this property. I think, Desiree, we left it, help me with my memory, we left it as we would explore what it would take, not deeding that property to the marina as part of the marina lease, but what would it take and how we get the process moving on the 41st Avenue piece itself.
Yes, we are presenting the process that the city would have to follow for abandonment of that road. That process is dictated in state law. It's a lengthy and interesting process, so we'll be presenting those options to the Real Property Committee at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. So, the other areas that were covered, we've already covered in the Ways and Means meeting. The one item we didn't mention is, we keep getting asked by the mayor, "What would it take for the county to take over the restrooms?" I think there is some worthwhile conversation that the city administration can engage in to see if they do have an interest in a way for us to save money. We did have, I'm skipping ahead, discussion of lot coverage in setback areas. Councilmember Ferencs had asked, specific to some properties, that would appear to go beyond the 40% requirement, certainly when you look at all the surface areas and the permeable areas. And we had asked that the city take a look at those properties, come back with some discussion with Douglas Kerr on whether or not they were indeed compliant, and if there's more that we should do with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
And if I may, one of the discussions that we're going to have to do with revenue in the future is, as we know, drainage is going to be one of our big, big problems. And I think what we need to do is look at, when we're going through our, trying to develop our revenue process throughout the city, is look towards our billing department and our lot coverage. And I think we need to have a graduated building fee structure based on lot coverage. So, that's something that you guys can continue to work on as well, because the more impervious search for surfaces you have, obviously increases the drainage problems that we have throughout the island. And so, there needs to have some type of impact fee that we need to have with that, because it's just pushing, as the one resident that showed up with tonight, it's just pushing onto somebody else.
I would hope in this January 31st meeting, we're all coming with ideas, because many of them are real property ideas. I've got other ideas as well, and totally agree with you.
Okay.
The other item we added was consideration of the city arborist. I think we've all dealt with tree issues over the last year. And the idea was, you know, what would be the best approach to have arborists that we have confidence in that aren't, I hate to use the term shady when it comes to arborists, but I will, where you can just pay them a fee and take down whatever tree you'd like to take down, not because it's diseased, but because you'd like to have more ability to build. So, the city is working on moving forward with that, with a list probably of three arborists that are preferential arborists that you would have to go through in order to do that. With that, the next meeting date is 9:00 a.m., Wednesday, February 6th, and that concluded the Real Property Committee.
Two questions, sir. On the arborist, we would make the property owner pay for that fee?
Absolutely.
And then, number 2, 1100 Pavilion Drive, do we need a vote on that, or...
Well, that's coming out for Public Works for a brief meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's right. Great report. Thank you. Now, let's go back to Recreation.
Public Works.
I thought we had Public Works, now we're talking about the Academy.
No. Sorry. Public Works Committee met at 9:00 a.m. Thursday, January 3rd. All members and appropriate staff were present. I was elected chair, and Councilwoman Smith was elected vice-chair with the contingency she will attend Isla Palms Water and Sewer Meeting. Under Director Pitt's report, garbage pickup was up in November and flat for December, and miscellaneous garbage pickup was up for both months. We discussed the needed improvement and repairs at the Public Works Building, which we already have voted on, and we are anticipating a new assistant director of the department, and I know Personnel Committee is working toward filling that position. Under Phase 2 Drainage, work is complete on Palm Boulevard, and 50th is complete. 51st will be completed this week. The project is anticipated to be 100% completed in February. And again, these are complex projects, and just want to point out that the engineering on Phase 2 Drainage began in 2012. So, it's a very long process to do these drainage projects. The underground storage tank removal and replacement at the marina site, work began yesterday, and that entire project is expected to take seven or eight weeks. And the first week or so is definitely the worst. And the marina store is closed and will reopen Saturday morning, January 26th, at 6:00 a.m. with some major upgrades. We continue to explore new trash cans with lids for the beach. Update on the ditches. Director Pitts updated us on various ditch and drainage issues. Many of these include Charleston County, and he continues to work with the county on these problem areas. We then had a discussion where Councilman Kinghorn requested Director Pitts indicate where our worst drainage problems are on the island. And the director indicated the worst issues are in the middle of the island, from 21st to 41st avenues. This led us to the discussion of the drainage issues in conjunction with septic systems, which leads to the issue of island-wide sewer. We will request a joint meeting with Isla Palms Water and Sewer, once they've completed their master plan from Thomason Hutton, and we will finalize the memorandum of understanding. This may be an opportunity for a special task force. As our sea levels are rising and flooding becomes more frequent, it is a health issue for island residents. We then talked about consideration of the expansion of the plastic ban, which we will vote on later this evening as an ordinance. We voted unanimously to recommend to City Council amending our ordinance to ban plastic straws, stirrers, and polystyrene products at point-of-sale to match those of our neighbors. Under New Business, we discussed the fiscal year 20 budget. This information's all available in the minutes and was discussed in Ways and Means. For the sake of time, I'll refer everyone to the minutes or the tape. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Our next meeting is Monday, February 11th, at 9:00 a.m. in the conference room. This ends my report.
Wow, you're the fastest tonight. Thank you.
I'm afraid, if I may, I'm going to slow it down a little bit.
Yes, okay.
The other thing we did, and it was the second time a committee that I've served on Public Works has done this, we unanimously supported a position that the island go 100% connected to the sewer system. Now, previous council, a similar motion was made and approved. If you add up those members of councils that supported that, it's actually a majority of those sitting on this dais. We received a lot of feedback from citizens that drainage and sewer were number 1 and 2 issues. I'd like you to think about how they're integrated. Most of the outfalls on the island that are in need of repair are in the middle of the island. Well, guess what else is primarily in the middle of the island? Most of the septic systems. If we have the best drainage and do not deal with the sewer issue, we potentially are putting effluent from the septic systems with rising sea levels, with increased rain indications, with rising water levels into our creeks and marshes. We cannot think about these as separate tasks, but must think about how they're interconnected. I've talked to a couple engineers about this. They've validated what my previous experience has been in this regard. Please do the same, if you would like. Now, we can't control a national disaster and its impact on us. We can control this issue. Both long-term drainage and connectivity to the sewer system takes time. There's major projects. In our bailiwick clearly is the responsibility of drainage. The sewer system's responsibility to manage and get the cost is across the street. We've got to look at these things together. We've got to look at these things together, and I would propose for your consideration for a future meeting, that we should pass the most stringent ordinances with regards to hooking up as soon as possible. You've all seen the notes that I've seen about people who want to hook up, but it's not cost-effective. Our development issues, we've got to drive it, and we should set a goal of 2030, that this island get on the sewer system and do what we need to do with across the street to make this happen. That's something we can impact. If not, that's as big a concern, or a greater concern, long time, long term, economically on this island than the next storm that hits us. This is really a critical issue that we do not want to ignore. Thank you. Okay, sorry to be such a downer.
You owe me the money.
Moving on, Recreation. Sir?
I was talking to this, Jim. Excuse me.
Okay. Are we okay to move forward? Okay, thank you. Recreation.
That's me again. Let me pull you in a minute a second. I apologize. Oh, I got it. Drafted it. Chair in too many, chair in too many.
H-59, 50.
You got it? Okay, thank you for your patience. We'll roll through this. All right. The Recreation Committee met Tuesday, January 8th. All committee members were present. There was no election of Chair because it just stayed the same, but we're going to probably change that next meeting. Under Citizens' Comments, we had a group of gentlemen show up. Dan Slutshiver spoke on behalf of them about the, they call themselves the Old Man's Basketball Group, that are trying to play on Saturday mornings at the Rec Center. And the Recreation Director is working with them to make that accommodation possible for them. And actually, they did play this past weekend. We, under New Business, we had discussion of recreational facility uses, rental and access options. So that is something we're working on, trying to take hints from other municipalities in the area and try to find ways to, if it's, if, way to make revenue from our Recreation Center. And as Councilmember Moy said, there should not be any recre, any part of the Recreation Department that's not being used at any one time. So, I mean, it should, it should basically be, we should be able to utilize all of it and at some point make money doing it as well, offset our costs. Under Department Member Report, the Director stated that the participation of children between the ages of five and six has increased by 22%, which is kind of interesting. Upcoming events are Doggy Day at the Rec on February 9th, the Front Beach Fest is scheduled for Saturday, March 9th, and the IOP Yard Sale is scheduled for March 30th. We did have Citizen, we amended the agenda to have somebody who came in late speak. Brenda Rosenthal showed up. She was talking about trying to create more of a community, community programming at the Rec Department, where people can have, sit around, have coffee, or what have you, after their meetings. And so, and we are, actually do have a lot of that going on right now. So it's a lot of, we have just a bunch of people who can gather and speak, or gather and talk, or gather and have coffee, or what have you. Under Old Business, consideration of the award for Talbot Industries, we've discussed that. We had an update on Surfing Franchise, an RFP, and possibly required amendments to the city code. Administrator or Interminister Fregoso said that she, she's working the RFP, and she stated that has been focusing on how a franchise agreement would look, and is working with the city attorney about other ordinances that can be required to make that change. Also, another revenue source for the Recreation Department in the city. We had discussion of the fiscal year 20 budget and capital plan as attached, and that was the end of our meeting.
Oh, my goodness.
So, and our next Monday, meeting is Monday, February 4th.
Great report, and Ryan, I think you just beat Carol.
I'm going to talk fast.
Personnel.
I'm going to talk fast. Okay, Personnel met on Monday, January 7th. All were present, called meeting to order. The minutes were passed unanimously. Citizens' Comments, Jim Rye commented positively on the interim administrator's performance review, cautions against overuse of executive sessions, and complimented the new Jim floor. Under Old Business, we had a conversation about ad hoc committees for standing committees. According to our city attorney, to form ad hoc committees, municipal changes must be adopted. However, the city code gives the mayor some flexibility to form task force, i.e. the farmer's market. Councilmember Moy said he was getting feedback from citizens who want to become more involved to improve the quality of life on the island. He stated that he does not want to dampen the enthusiasm of these citizens who have knowledge and expertise that could benefit the city. He added that he does not want to tell them that the city code is preventing them from participating. So we are going to look into the formation of either task force going forward, or whatever we can do to involve the citizens who have said they want to be. Our first look will be at the boards and commissions, because we do not have a set of criteria as to application to those or any set of qualifications for these committees, so we're going to look at that first. We then had a discussion of the COLA and merit increases, which we've already voted Then had an update on the hiring process for city administrator, chief of police, and Assistant Public Works Director. The Chair has established a weekly Monday afternoon call with the CEO of the Mercer Group, Jim Mercer. At the time of the Personnel Committee, he reported greater interest than usual for the positions of city administrator and chief of police since going public about a week before his report, but that he had not received resumes for the Public Works position. He was asked to put the chief of police position on the fast track, to which he agreed, with the goal of interviewing top candidates by mid-February. In my conversation with him yesterday, he reported a great deal of interest in all three positions nationwide. For the chief of police, he has received 71 strong resumes, coming in five to six per day from across the nation, Arizona to New York State. He's also begun his initial screening and will pre-interview the top candidates in the coming weeks. The timeline for all three positions is forthcoming, but I again repeated that the chief of police position should be his top priority, which he agreed. At the February Personnel Committee meeting, a list of qualifications and makeup of outside sources for the interview teams will be developed and sent to Mercer for his review and recommendations. Our goal is to be interviewing by mid-February. Update on the interim city administrator's evaluation. On December 27th, the mayor, interim administrator Fregoso, and Chair Ferenc met to review in confidence the performance evaluations for the interim administrator's evaluation for the period of 2018 that she served in that capacity. The Chair was pleased to report all members of City Council not only responded, but also took time to seriously consider their responses with comments and suggestions for growth. All council members praised her for handling the two positions at the same time. The areas for improvement were discussed openly, as were those areas in which she excelled. Administrator Fregoso received very high marks for her handling of the two storm events, and overall, her evaluation concluded that she meets or exceeds expectations in almost every area. Congratulations. Under New Business, we can, there was a consideration of tasks to be completed in 2019, but after much discussion, consensus could not be reached on several pertinent legal questions. Therefore, reviewing and revising the municipal code will come back to the committee with recommendations from city staff. We discussed the FY operating budget and capital plan, which we have already discussed in Ways and Means. Our meeting will be scheduled for the first Tuesday of the month at 8:30 a.m., but our very first meeting had to be changed because of the annual legislative day, so rather than meeting February 5th, the February meeting is February 11th at 5:00 p.m. After that, all future meetings are set for the first Tuesday of each month at 8:30 a.m. We then went, moved into executive session in accordance with the South Carolina Code, Section 30-4-70, to discuss personnel and employment matters. Councilmember Rice seconded the motion, passed unanimously. Personnel Committee returned to open session at 7:12, and the Chair announced that the committee had not taken any action or vote while in executive. The meeting was adjourned at 7:13. Vacancies? Vacancies, City of Isla Palms, current vacancies by department, Police Department, Chief of Police, which is searches in progress, Force Warrant Officers, one communications technician, one animal control officer. Fire Department is fully staffed. Public Works, search in progress for one Public Works Assistant Director of Facilities and Maintenance. Recreation, zero, part-time openings are posted on the website. Building is zero. City Hall, general government, search for one city administrator in progress. Finally, November Safety Sweepstakes winners. Recreation Department, Joshua Key. Police Department, Anna Mitchell. Fire Department, Sean Hagen, Hogan, excuse me. Public Works, Joseph Washington. For the December Safety Sweepstakes, Building Department, William Seabrook. Police Department, James Couch. Fire Department, J.T. Hall. Public Works, Bernard Gordine. This is my report.
Great report. Any questions?
I do. I'd like to thank the Personnel Committee for all your hard work for so long this year. And I listened to the audio, I was, I'm very interested in the ad hoc or task force committees. I think one, I would encourage you all to strongly consider some kind of green committee that could recommend proactive environmental issue, measures that the city could take. And as point of clarification from your discussion, I think there was some mention of the Isla Palms Cleanup Crew, which I'm involved with. I just want to make it clear for, if there is any confusion, it's not a city relates, city-sponsored event. It, we are more grassroots, and while I'm involved with it, it is separate from.
No public interest.
Although we welcome everybody. Everybody can be a member of the Cleanup Crew.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, sir.
Just observation for all of you, and if you're going to do a comprehensive review, you might be interested in looking into this. We have nine members on our council. By comparison, the county of Charleston has nine members. Now, what served us and was set up over 50 years ago doesn't necessarily have to apply to today. So I'd ask that you look at others. By one example, I gave the example earlier of Beaufort. Beaufort, three times our size. They have 150 employees, 50, 60 more than we do. You know how many members of council they have? Four and one mayor. They have a total of five. Now, they have a council manager form of government, which arguably is much more efficient. So I'd ask that you may want to investigate what would require a change in a form of government and reduction of the size of council. I think you'd find some efficiencies there.
So you're, we discussed that. We discussed not only that, but also looking at all of the committees that we have. Are they the right committees? Are they named right? Are they?
Great, thank you.
Formed right? Also, looking at all of the city code, because as I read the entire city code, there is obsolete, such obsolete language in there.
Thank you for that.
And, you know, we had put together a month-by-month review of every one of the topics, but we couldn't get consensus on which ones should come first. So we're going, turning to staff to say, okay, you tell us which part of the code needs to be looked at first, and what changes need to be made, as well as the search that were taking place.
The second observation I'd like to make is these positions and how long they're taking to get any resumes in front of us. It's been over eight months since we had these two resignations. It's been a long process. You know, the process just begins when we down-select to three, and then we have to go through our own process, right? It seems to me that if it's not against the agreement we have with the search firm, that we should be advertising with the Municipal Association.
We are.
Great. The COGS.
We are.
South Carolina Association of Commons.
We are.
ICMA.
We are.
NLC.
We are.
All of them.
We are.
NACO.
The, we are.
GEICO.
How long have we been doing that? And how many resumes has that generated?
The purpose of outsourcing this service is so that we don't have to look at a bunch of resumes. We only look at the qualified resumes.
I understand. But if the process is...
The holdup of the process was on the upfront of advertising the openings, which admittedly was a huge hiccup, and we overcame that. But it delayed everything. So it's not that the process isn't moving, it's that the kickoff of the process took a long time. At this point, we're comfortable with the speed that things are moving, and we're on track per the delay.
So where we have initiated postings, has that brought some resumes to our attention?
I think Council, Council, our Chair, person...
I haven't questioned the search firm as to where these resumes came from. All I did was say, you know, he reported that we had, to date, 71 applications for the Chief of Police. He had a stack of equal amounts, but he hadn't counted them, so he wouldn't give me a number for the administrator and for the Public Works. I have asked him to fast-track Public, Chief of Police, you know, in lieu of the situation we were facing. He's agreed to do that, but he hasn't stopped looking at the other two. We're doing three concurrent at the same time.
So has he posted them on these other sites?
Yes.
Or have we?
He.
Okay, he has. So it's a month old. Of course, I would have thought this would have been done months ago, but I went on in this...
We can't do hindsight 2020. We, we got to him.
I understand.
After December, and from December to now, which is less than a month because of the Christmas, we have been able to bring in 71 applications.
I understand that. Either for the current process, if we're less than happy with it, or the future, we may want to do some of these postings ourselves immediately. With regards to the one example that I looked at, it's been about a month ago, the Municipal Association did not have this posting. What they did have was some of our junior police officer postings. Thank you.
If I don't mind, Madam Chair.
Yes.
And members, y'all did a great job. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, movement along. Reports from city officers, boards, commissions. A, Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, no meeting in January. B, Board of Zoning Appeals, no meeting in January. Planning Commission, minutes are attached. Reports from special or joint committees, none. Petitions received, referred, disposed of, none. Bills already in possession of council, none. Introduction of new bills, resolutions, and proclamations. A, First Reading Ordinance 2019-01, an ordinance to sell a portion of city-owned property, which is 1100 Pavilion Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Want to waive the reading?
Any discussion? Here, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it.
I guess we did.
Okay.
We waived it.
Yeah. I'm trying.
First reading of ordinance 2019-02, an ordinance amending to Title I Government and Administration, Chapter IV Officers and Department, Article B, City Administrator. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved to not read it.
Thank you.
Waive the reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Movement on. First reading of ordinance 2019-03, an ordinance amending Title II Public Safety, Chair I, Police Protection.
Chapter I.
Chapter I.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And waive the reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Moving on. First reading, ordinance 2019-04, ordinance amending Title III Public Works of the City, Isla Palms Code of Ordinances, Chapter IV Single Use Plastic Bags.
Motion to approve.
Second. And waive the reading.
All in favor? Any discussion?
I think we should probably have a little bit of discussion.
Okay.
Good discussion, first reading.
No discussion, first reading. All in favor?
Oh, the, aye.
Any nays? Moving forward. Miscellaneous Business, 2019 Safety Resolution, which we do annually, motion to approve and waive the reading?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Waive the reading?
Waive it.
Ayes have it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Moving forward. Miscellaneous Business, 2019 Safety Resolution, which we do annually, motion to approve and waive the reading?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Waive the reading?
Waive it.
Ayes have it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, next meeting, 6:00 p.m., Tuesday, February 26th, 2019, Council Chambers, no executive session. Do I hear a motion to approve?